County Council Meeting is now in session. The Honorable Chad Wynn is to give the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Please pray with me. Dear God, thank you for the many blessings that you give in our wonderful county. Please be with us tonight as we try to remember those and try to figure out how you best want us to use them. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, Michael, no oath of office? Okay. Our first order of business then is appearances. Keep York County Beautiful to present their annual report. Yes ma'am. And be sure to give your name and address.
My name is Melody Kears. I live at 1037 Cherry Road, Rock Hill, South Carolina. Good evening, council. I'm here to present Keep York County Beautiful's eighth anniversary report to council. Here are our current board members. We have three open board seats in District Four, Five, and Seven. Our total volunteer hours this past year has been four hundred and thirty-two hours, and the value to York County has been eleven thousand five hundred dollars. We have environmental education liaisons, Adopt a County Road, York Electric Cooperative Annual Meeting, Litter Challenge, America Recycles Day, Earth Day Birthday, which just occurred, Household Hazardous Material Collection Day, which was a really good event, Great American Cleanup. We do a litter index every year, which I'll report on later. Community gardens. We gave out several mini-grants this year, and we also signed up several businesses for Adopt Your Spot. Some of the awards and grants that we were given were the Keep South Carolina Beautiful Affiliate Recognition Award, Keep America Beautiful President Circle Award, Community Pride Grant of seven thousand seven hundred dollars, Keep South Carolina Beautiful Grant of ten thousand dollars, and to date, over a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in grants. So, our three major things that we try to promote throughout York County is beautification, waste reduction, and litter prevention. So, waste reduction and recycling. We celebrated November fifteenth, America Recycles Day. We also gave away several prizes and our fifth grade adventures. We also try to promote plant composting. You can get a compost bin dirt cheap at half the retail price. On November eighteenth, we sold several of those with Rock Hill Clean and Green. Litter prevention and beautification. We have hashtag NotInMyBackyard, where we are trying to prevent yards, litter in yards and around the community, and help get rid of York County's litter. We also do the Great American Cleanup, which was in April and May. We have the number up there that different organizations or groups can call and get free supplies for the Great American Cleanup. And here are some of our volunteers. We celebrated Earth Day Birthday this year. It was the twenty-eighth year of the celebration. It was a good time. I think we did a lot of community outreach and educating young people about plastic reduction, use of single-use plastics, and litter prevention. We gave out several KYCB mini-grants this year. Here are some of our recipients. They involved community gardens, a lot of educational gardens, as well as some community gardens like Clover and Ann Springs Close Greenway. Here's some pictures of some of our grant recipients. And then outreach and education. This is our third year of doing school, high school and college scholarships. Here's some of our literature. We do have a Facebook page, a Twitter feed, and we also have Instagram, and those are our addresses. We also performed the York County Litter Index. We hit four local areas, York, Fort Mill, Clover, and Rock Hill. And as you can see from the two thousand sixteen year, we've seen a reduction in three of those communities and an uptick in one. We also have Adopt a County Road, we have Adopt Your Spot, of course, the Great American Cleanup, and our Litter Challenge, which are four different programs that we promote. And here's one of the Adopt a County Roads. More information is available about our Adopt Your Spot business. This is kind of a new program that we're doing, and we have a couple of businesses signed up so far, but we do provide all the cleanup supplies, litter receptacles, and we also promote their business in print media, social media, and more for doing the Adopt Your Spot. And there you go.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Appreciate the work y'all do.
I would like to point out that the uptick in litter in that one community correlates directly to when our treasurer moved into it. Don't know if that's...
Bill, you need to judge Kevin.
But it might need to be investigated.
Okay, our next order of business is public forum. And remember with this, now you have two minutes. In order to be fair to the next person, I have to move you along after a couple minutes. Our first person is Natasha McNeil to talk about York County Fashion Week.
Do you have any assistance? I believe the attorney could assist.
You can give it to Michael. He can pass it to you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Natasha McNeil. I have two minutes, so I'm going to be very, very brief. I am a native of York, South Carolina, actually sang the national anthem for the opening of Jefferson Elementary School. I'm coming back home, and I'm an opera singer by education and in marketing and advertising currently in Rock Hill in Charlotte, North Carolina. However, I found that it's a challenge whenever you get home off of seventy-seven, you want to go out and you want to enjoy yourself, got to get back on seventy-seven to enjoy yourself. And I said, no, that's not right. So, right here in York County, we should have high caliber events that are going to bring out the masses and really serve as a platform for our local innovators, entrepreneurs, and brands. So, York County Fashion Week, in a nutshell, is going to do that for those boutiques that have found that this is a destination spot, such as in Kingsley and in Knowledge Park, those wonderful areas that we have developing right now. And I don't know about you, but we all have on clothes, so there is a level of interest, right, for fashion. I am just very grateful that I have some of our members here to support us, but I want to give you our mission because we are requesting a proclamation from council. Our mission is to serve as a platform of York County brands, innovators, and entrepreneurs to showcase their skills and products through measurable advertising and strategic marketing objectives. Local retailers, restaurants, and hotels in the unincorporated areas of York County will greatly benefit from the increased tourism traffic and spending during the week with significant overall economical impact. Our goal is to bring together creative minds and unique visions to shape a stronger and more successful community while highlighting the York County and South Carolina's historical grandeur. So, you can look at the information that I passed on to you, but in a nutshell, we actually launched on March the twelfth, and as you know, that's a significant date in our history, seventeen eighty-five. That's when our county was charted. So, we wanted to place historical emphasis on who we are as a county. October the seventh, that was that great, great victory, right? The Patriots against the British. And so, instead of riding the coattails of New York Fashion Week, we want to highlight Old York's historical grandeur and celebrate our week, October the second through the seventh. We have six venues throughout the county, Lake Wiley, Camp Thunderbird, Loom, Co-Working Gallery, and Fort Mill, Rock Hill Southern Charm Events, Hilton Garden Inn in Rock Hill, and the Center for the Arts in Rock Hill. So, we are also serving as a platform for those wonderful venues. Have a ton of people who are excited and social media following, as well as a website, and we do ask that you would take this into consideration as this could definitely be a huge success for our county. Of course, jeans, monograms, all of that, that's what we're about, and of course, we like to dress up a little bit here and there, so that's what we want to bring to the county.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Extra minute.
Thank you.
I'll give everybody else a sign up an extra minute.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, next person is Mary Beth Yancey. Mary? Okay. Uh, next person is Scott, is that Heststrom? Yes, sir. Yeah, now, did you want to, Mr. Johnson just pointed out, you may be wanting to talk about an ordinance we have for a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you might want to wait because that way you can speak as long as you want to speak.
When is that happening?
Uh, well, it's on the agenda. We'll get to it fairly quickly, depending on which one you want.
I'll wait for that.
Yes, sir. And then the last person is, it looks like Roger Baldwin? Is that for the, one of the...
He's probably from the telephone tower.
Did you, was it one of the things we're considering, or...
Yes, I just want to give an update on the proposed tower location at thirteen fifteen Heckle Boulevard. Since the last meeting, we have met with the...
Interrupt you. Would you give your address again?
Thirteen fifteen Heckle Boulevard, Rock Hill. Since the last council meeting, we have met with eighteen of the homeowners, including the president, and a rather lengthy meeting, two and a half hours, and we had a chance to discuss possible options for the, or optional locations for the tower. It involved moving it perhaps fifty to a hundred feet to kind of get it out of the sight line of the neighborhood street. Also, they wanted to consider other locations in nearby area. Since then, we've maintained contact with the HOA president and some of the individual members, and are continuing to try to resolve this situation where everyone becomes in agreement with that site, so.
We don't normally, since we're considering this in the future when Mr. Roddy wants to bring it back up, question, and I don't remember, can you clarify, you own the land all the way to the corner, right, of Highway Five and Heckle?
Uh, no, no, we're about, actually, maybe a thousand yards prior to that, yeah, so.
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you.
Our next item's consent agenda, and Ms. Cox wants to have item six removed, and staff wants to remove consent agenda number twenty-two for future deferral, so if the motion would include those items.
Move to approve consent agenda with a deferral of item twenty-two and move item number six to new business number three.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, question on the motion, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item's public hearing. First item, council to hold a public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter one fifty-five zoning code so as to provide for micro winery, winery and winery with agritourism, to provide for regulatory provisions related thereto, to amend the definition and use table in order to establish the uses and provide for the districts in which they are allowed, to establish micro winery as a special exception, accessory use in RUD and RUD one, to establish winery as a permitted use in AGC, AGC one, BD three, and ID, to establish winery with agritourism as a permitted use in BD three and ID, and a special exception use in AGC and AGC one, to provide supplemental regulations for wineries and agritourism, AGC and AGC one, and accessory micro wineries in RUD and RUD one, in order to address items such as minimum lot size, on-site activities, hours of operation, parking, signage, and proof of other required permits, and to provide for other matters related thereto. Anybody here wants to speak against? And I'm assuming all these fine people want to talk about wineries. That's probably what drove everybody here. Anybody wants to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
I'd like to speak possibly against.
Okay, well, we'll start with against, so.
I need to give my address. Bob Hall, sixteen ninety Gilbert Highway, York. Farmer here in York County. And we're just asking that, what we're reading so far, there's lots of regulations that could, and could involve a lot of us that are already in the farming business, that maybe step back and give us time for input, those of us that it could possibly affect. And so, that's our concern, just to have some time for input. Have not had any consultation with anybody about how these regulations could affect existing businesses that are doing some agritourism along with agriculture.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else opposed? Yes, sir. Welcome.
I'm Dicky Harper, sixty-three seventy old York Road. I may not be either opposed or in favor of. Just as Bob Hall was saying, I come wearing the hat this time of York County Farm Bureau. And as Bob said, we'd like, we felt like we should be involved as a stakeholder. Now, I find it rather premature, maybe, that we're going forward with this, and you met with stakeholders after you had your last meeting, the Monday after that. I was there, part of that, but wasn't aware of any of this that was coming up or coming on. Busy time for farmers. Bob's busy, he's out at the strawberry field right now, come, come in to talk. But we are concerned at all these different folks that are farmers now that want to be involved in agritourism. Some, not by choice of wanting to, but maybe having to financially, but all of them are looking for that niche. All of them are looking for that je ne sais quoi. That impressed you, didn't it, Mr. Chairman?
It did. Actually, I thought that would... Michael, if you could later, provide that definition.
Pardon my French, Mr. Chairman. But I believe in this, we may be, as you said, Mr. Chairman, in the last meeting, if I can paraphrase you, and probably not correctly, that we may be heading toward overregulation. If I understand this correctly, what you're going to provide for winery in the zoning code is longer, maybe than what we've got for AGC at present. I could be wrong. I assume y'all are paying the consultants by the word on what y'all are, what you're getting for this, is you have the consultants involved in this. So, I don't want these farmers to be swept up in this net that y'all are casting with agritourism. In your appendix A, you've got a definition for agritourism. We hadn't had a definition for agritourism before in AGC. I feel like all of it should be taken up together, but if it's going to be all taken up together, maybe we don't need all of these different regulations. Can we have something general? It talks like where we're in agritour, I mean, we're in AGC, farming, general, livestock, general, cattle, hogs, bees, all these different things. So, the hours of operation, you know, it kind of confused me watching last month's, yeah, well, it wasn't last month, last meeting. You're talking about picking apples, you're talking about people's dreams, all these different things confuse me as to where we were, where we were going. So, I just want to think that we could maybe come back as a stakeholder, as a farmer's. I'm not opposed to this, to the wineries, but are we overregulating this as we go forward? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dick. Anybody else opposed? Okay, anybody for? Do we have a motion to close?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. We need a new motion, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve as written.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah.
Miss Love?
I just think that there's a little, maybe a little bit of confusion. I think there's going to be a lot of confusion going forward tonight on some things, and we just want to be sure that everybody who's taking the time to come here and everybody that's watching and everybody that lives here ultimately understands what we're doing. But right now, we do not have any language in our ordinance that allows for a winery, and we're trying to resolve that. And so, I don't think that we're, this is government overreach. I think this is government allowing a use that is currently not available, and that I know that there are a lot of people in this room that would probably like to have a winery somewhere in York County, so this will allow for that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Johnson?
I have no problem with us trying to create an ordinance that allows wineries of some sort, but I do, I do hear this whole idea of, are we moving too fast and is this going to be overly burdensome? I wouldn't have a problem with it passing second reading and then giving this four to six weeks to allow the stakeholders to get together, see if they can, what they can come up with and bring it back to us. It doesn't, it slows down the process a little bit, but I'd rather slow down the process than have a bad ordinance. And so, I'd like to see it, let's get through the second reading, and then let's sit this back down for a couple of weeks, let it, let everybody get together, and, you know, hopefully we'll come out with a better ordinance.
Anybody?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Mr. Winkler?
I'll agree, you know, and we talked about it last time, but part of what we were talking about was, you know, in here, it says change the hours of operation for agritourism from ten to eight. And again, that's one that concerns me because I know Mr. Hall has people come out and pick strawberries a lot of times before ten o'clock in the morning because that's when they want to get out there before it gets the doggone hot. And, you know, so does Blacks Peaches and Wendy Hill or whoever, you know, so these, these hours are something I think we need input on as well as much of the other stuff. I do think we need to fix the problem we have in that we can't legally have, although I'm not real sure that's exactly right either, but, you know, can't legally have a winery when we have one operator, two now operating in the county. But I'm all for slowing down and making sure the stakeholders are kept in the loop on this thing, that we don't fix one problem by creating four more, so.
Anybody? Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I don't have a problem. We're getting ready to have a workshop tomorrow night on phase two ordinances, which is, goes more like Mr. Harper was saying, to try to get a global approach. These ones that we're talking about tonight were issues that we have now that we're trying to resolve before we do that, wineries being one of them. I'm not aware of the ones, the thing that makes it so urgent, so I don't have a problem with deferring it. Do think we probably need to add that to the motion, if that's okay, because I do like having it back. Otherwise, when it comes back for third reading, then we'll have to defer that.
Well, you have Mr. Johnson talking about deferring third reading.
Right.
You're talking about just going ahead and deferring second reading.
No, I added that it doesn't come, that the time for it to come back as part of the motion.
Then I would make a motion to amend, to bring this back before council at our third reading back on June eighteenth.
Well, who made the motion? Allison?
She accepts it.
Well, can...
Then you're okay.
You accept it.
Are you okay with that?
Yep. Yes.
Okay.
Is staff okay with that?
Okay.
June eighteenth?
Okay. Anybody else?
I think, what's interesting is that we did have a workshop on this, and it was three hours long, and there were a lot of the things that you're talking about are concerns that we had with overregulation, and are we creating, are we creating a bigger problem to address one finite issue, which was just to allow a winery? We were told we needed to do that. We have a place in our ordinance scheme now to allow a brewery, but we don't have a place to allow a winery. And from what I understand, the isolated, these ordinances that are coming up had an isolated issue that needed to be addressed immediately. We're doing an overhaul of the zoning code with a consultant, but these things were issues that were brought up because something had popped up. There was an actual individual who expressed some concern. I don't think that issue remains. I may be wrong. Is that right, Audra? I mean, is there something that we're trying to do to immediately rectify a problem?
The one that brought this to the attention, they got a special exception from the ZBA, so there's no pressing need, as far as I know, on this.
So, I, since there is no, since there is no urgency on this one, I would be in favor of basically just tabling it, but I'll certainly vote for the extension, but I think we do need to be real careful about trying to figure out what hour something needs to operate when we don't do that kind of business. Those things are concerning.
Yeah, and that's kind of when I read this over and thought about it again. I mean, I certainly see the logic in this coming about, but government, once it gets its hands on things, just can't let go usually. So, because of that and the hours of operation starting at ten AM, and if you have agritourism and farmers are out there picking their crops at six in the morning or seven, and I'm not a farmer, forgive me for not being exact, but early in the morning, this kind of confuses the issues even more, and hopefully, things will be clarified better at the next reading in six weeks, but for that reason, I can't support it. So, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? No. And one other thing, the county manager and I talked about, a lot of times we're up here and we're looking around and saying, well, who do we ask? Andy, Audra? Now, tonight, most things are going to be addressed to her, so carry on, but in the future, we're just going to address to Bill, and Bill can pick the staff member to, so we don't look all over the place trying to pick the right person to talk to. But for tonight, since everything's related to what Audra does, we might as well just go directly to her. Next item, council to hold a public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter one fifty-five zoning code so as to provide for event venue and event venue large capacity, to provide for regulatory provisions related thereto, to amend the definition and use table in order to establish the uses and provide for the districts in which they are allowed, to establish event venue and large capacity venues as special exceptions in AGC, AGC one, RUD, RUD one, to add event venues as a permitted use and large capacity event venues as a special exception in BD three, to amend individual use regulations in BD three and add supplemental regulations in AGC, AGC one, RUD, RUD one, and BD three, in order to address items such as on-site managers, operational plans with associated restrictions, separation requirements from residences, lot size, on-site activities, hours of operation, and parking, to amend and conform the off-street parking requirements table and provide for other matters related thereto. Anybody here wants to speak against? Against? Yes, sir. Mr. Harper again.
Dicky Harper, sixty-three seventy old York Road. A lot of what I said earlier applies to this. Have questions about these people that are in agritourism, they're bringing children out on field trips? What about the parking situation? What if they have a corn maze? Say that corn maze is five acres, and if I read your regulations correctly, that it's like one space for every hundred, for every hundred square feet of outdoor, it mentions indoor, but I think it says a hundred square feet for outdoor. If you had a five-acre corn maze and you considered that a venue, you'd have to have twenty-one hundred and seventy-five parking spaces for that. So, what are you going to consider a venue? Also, is a rodeo fall into that? What about, who's exempt? Family and friends? What can they do and who's exempt from this? Once again, it's a whole lot of questions that I think these people, and I'm not in agritourism. Frankly, I'd like to fly, as I try to, under the radar most of the time and avoid most of everything, but those that are involved in this should have some real questions about the venue. Let's don't get them caught up in something that's overreach. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Anybody else wants to speak against? Anybody want to speak in favor? Do we have a motion to close?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Need any motion? Somebody?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Winkler?
You know, as we've said in the past on this, this is one that we asked to be moved along, but it has morphed into a lot more than we asked for, I think, because we do have some businesses in the county. We've got at least one in my district right now and one in Allison's where there's property that is available, and there, people are trying to buy it to start an event venue, a, you know, place where people can go do weddings or your corporate Christmas party or whatever it may be. And right now, our county codes say that that's illegal. You can't do that in the county. You can't have a place to do that in the unincorporated area. And that's crazy, in my opinion. Plus, I know that there are, no names being called, but there are several venues in my district that do that right now as a business. And, you know, they have some outdoor barns and different things, and they have weddings or different events and stuff there, and we're trying to, our goal was to make sure that you could do this and that everybody was kind of on the same playing field, but it has morphed into all of this other with how many times you can have one, and again, when, and that's some questions I have with that. I know in this, we say something about, you know, four times a year, different things, but, but what about Blacks or Wendy Hill or, you know, Bush and Vine where they have busloads of kids come on field trips? Every time do that, is that an event? Every time do that, is that an event that they have to get a permit for and file a different thing for every time a school takes a field trip to one of our farms is doing this? You know, that was not the intent when we said, okay, we want to be able to make sure these people can open up a venue to have a corporate party or a wedding or something to say, okay, well, now because we've done all this stuff, you can't have field trips out to show the kids how things grow and, you know, go in the little hut with the beehive attached to it over at Bush and Vine and look at how honey works and bees work and stuff. Can't do that anymore without, you know, you're going to do it four times a year. Is that what we're saying right now? That concerns me.
That was on the temporary, that was on the temporary uses, not on the, Audra, correct me if I'm wrong, was that not on temporary?
Temporary.
Yeah, that doesn't apply to this.
So, any, they don't have to get a permit every time they're having something like that come up then?
No, they would not.
But that's part of their business, so.
Yes, sir, Mr. Johnson.
I think one of the problems, you all can hear it, we sat through about a three-and-a-half hour-long workshop on all of these ordinances. And everyone up here pretty much voiced their displeasure with the extra regulation we were putting on the community. But here's the problem. When you read this, what it says is if you're within, if this event venue where they're going to have weddings every weekend pops up and it's less than, and it's three-hundred-and-ten feet from your house, they can be outside all night long with a band. And you're going to call the sheriff's department at some point, you're going to say, hey, this band's playing, I can't sleep at night. And sheriff's going to come out and say, well, they're outside of three-hundred-and-ten feet of a residence, they can legally do that. We try, and that is the problem. If people were good to each other, we wouldn't need a lot of these rules. But we have to create the rules to stop someone from doing that. And I can't tell you, I represent T.K. Fort Mill, can't tell you how many phone calls I get on Saturday mornings that say, such-and-such bar, such-and-such restaurant had a band and they played till 1:00 a.m. I get it all the time. And that's what we're, so we're trying to put some rules in place to try to control that. Are they, are some of them overly broad? Probably, unfortunately, it's the nature of this beast, but we're trying to scale this back. So, I guess my question is, do we want to do the same with this as we did with the other one and delay it six weeks to try to get more stakeholder input? And I'll make that in the form of an amended motion so that everybody can see it, that we would not have third reading until June 18th.
You're good with that? Okay. So, that's the new one. Anybody else?
Yeah, I don't have a problem. Again, same comments as last time, although I do, this is, this is getting closer to stuff that's not allowed to happen, that while we wrote these phase ones, we didn't just pull them out just to do it. At least that wasn't my understanding. And actually, if we fail this, that three-hundred feet doesn't matter, but we are doing some stuff to try to fix it. But the main goal is to allow an event that most of, like Mr. Winkler says, most of the community sees that should be allowed and to try to do that before the phase two.
Can I say something?
Yes.
So, one of my concerns, and I address this with county, is that, number one, I don't know what their definition of a stakeholder is, but my definition of a stakeholder is pretty much a resident. And so, we had meetings, we had meetings with developers moving forward with these next things that are coming up also. We had meetings, not we, but the county had meetings with developers, small developers, large developers. They chose people from particular districts, you know, a couple of people maybe from each district, and they had these meetings. And the last thing that I like, you know, government moves slow enough as it is, but the last thing that I like is a delay in things that I feel like desperately need to be done. Had the county, I'm going to just reiterate this to Bill, had the county publicized this after our workshop, those meetings would have already taken place, those public meetings where people, where the people in this room and the people who still don't know that we're doing this would have been able to come and voice their opinions. Mr. Harper would have been able to attend that meeting rather than this meeting, you know, a second reading. Here we are in the middle of something trying to get it passed for the good of everything and we're going to start over with this with the public meeting. And on the county website, it said, there was nothing on the county website except for a special call planning commission meeting, which nobody in this room would know what that meant or that they needed to turn out for that meeting. Secondly, the, on the county Facebook page, there was nothing sent out to the residents saying that, hey, there's going to be a meeting for you to attend. So, I think we need to either include these people, public, everybody that lives in my district for sure, because I want everybody to know what's going on, but I want everybody to know county-wide what's going on. And I think if we include that as an invitation to attend these meetings, we would be way ahead of the game at this point. So, I'm just a little disillusioned tonight by the fact that we didn't let everybody know and would like for that to change going forward. You know, I have struggled to post things and make people aware of things. I spend a lot of time doing that and the county's got a great new webpage. County's got access to a lot more people than I have access to and I would just like for that to be protocol going forward.
Anybody else? Ms. Cox?
We obviously, the way that the code is being interpreted by staff means that if anyone is trying to do the right thing and ask for an event to be done, they come here and they can't do it. Anybody who doesn't ask and just does it, doesn't. So, that needs to be fixed. The problem that I have with this and the problem that I'm going to have with third reading, I'm fine with deferring it. This was the same problem that I had and expressed at the workshop, is that we've also tacked on all of these regulations which may or may not apply and with all, you know, what may be acceptable or unacceptable in Mr. Johnson's district is very different than mine that is largely rural. So, I still have some concerns about how much regulation we're adding when what I thought we were trying to move forward with as a council in getting these things done was to simply create a use that we don't have so that folks can do it and not try and guess what all the rules should be attached to it. So, I'm glad that folks are speaking up about it and hopefully, folks that do this kind of work will come out and give some good feedback to us so that we don't mess something up.
And if we have that meeting and these people don't show up, if y'all don't show up, this public...
Anybody else?
We're back where we started, bro.
Okay. You know, this one came about for a need, a good reason. You know, I'm gonna, I've never tried to be just a no guy to everything just because I'm so conservative. I try to be logical and fair-minded. So, I'm going to give this, you know, it's still up for another reading, so I'm going to stand with my fellow council members and support the intent of this, but it's going to have to be per questions that Robert brought up, just, and I know that Ms. Love kind of, and you addressed it, but there's going to have to be some, come to meeting.
Jesus.
Well, thank you, sir. But I, you know, I'm going to go ahead and support this one for the intent meant. Question on the motion, all this in favor say aye. Opposed, no? Next item, council to hold a public hearing and consider amending in second reading of an ordinance to amend the York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 155, zoning codes so as to provide for non-metallic mineral product manufacturing, to provide for regulatory provisions related thereto, to amend the definition and use table in order to establish the uses and provide for the districts in which they are allowed or removed, to change from a permitted use to a special exception use in ID and to remove as a permitted use in UD, to amend individual district use regulations in ID by adding supplemental regulations in order to address items such as minimum lot size, access and routing plan, separation screening, dust regulation, hours of operation, performance standards agreements and proof of other governmental regulatory compliance requirements permits, to remove MPM as an allowable use in UD, to invoke the pending ordinance doctrine and to provide for other matters related thereto. Anybody wants to speak against?
And Chairman Blackwell?
Yes, sir.
Good. I'm sure most everybody out there is like me up until about a week ago and it may be what Chad's about to say. I had no idea what in the heck non-metallic mineral product manufacturing was. So, maybe they need to understand, what we're talking about is the cement plants and stuff on this. We got a big fancy federal regulation word for it, but that's what we're talking about here, I think, so.
Chad, do you want to add something?
Yeah, the only thing I was going to add, I've gotten an awful lot of emails about AGC and putting concrete plants in the middle of the farmland. And that has already been taken out. We took that out at first reading, it's not in here. The only thing we're talking about is whether it's a special exception use in ID. There are some conditions that staff wanted to add about removing some of the district's requirements, but the vast majority of emails that I got about, well, a lot of them were telling me I wanted to put a concrete plant in AGC and that's not why I didn't support first reading. But anyway, it's not, that part has been removed. So, you can tell us about that if you want to, but we're hearing you before you talk about that.
And I think the concern was just, it was a four-three vote and a lot of people were concerned to vote my...
But we'd add it back, but yeah, right now, we would have to make a whole different motion to add it back.
And since we're asking questions, were the concerns recommendations made at the last meeting, was that kind of part of the new one we're looking at? Has this been revised?
No, the motion was limited to removing AGC from the special exception. The concerns that staff raised about the separation, provided the map showing what would open up if it did not include the overlay districts and those are in your package.
So, as it is right now, essentially in all practical potential, it really eliminates the chance for another cement, if it's thirty years down the road, another cement manufacturer wants to come here, there's really no place they can go.
As the current zoning with ID...
And practical with this.
Unless we add those conditions. We add those conditions back and that alleviates layers, but that's usually a discussion after the public hearing, but I do think it's appropriate to point that out before because that's where...
Well, I think that's good that you made those points, Mr. Williams. Anybody here want to speak against?
Sure.
Yes, yes, sir.
Randy Weiss, thirty-two hundred Chester Highway.
Did you get that, Karen?
And I guess I'm confused because we have some AGC property and now we're saying that this will not be allowed with the mineral production in any AGC property in York County.
As long as we get through the next two readings with it that way, correct?
The next two.
As written.
Yeah, it'll have to be reasoned.
As written.
As written.
Proposed.
Yeah, because we were here, actually it was August 21st on 2017, and that was about a zoning change for a particular AC property. And we had a unanimous vote that, no, that's not going to happen. So, here, I got very alarmed when I heard that it's back on the agenda, but now it's under a different camp. It's not under zoning, it's different.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, and it just seemed funny that it's ironic that all of a sudden, same industry, same thing, could affect the same type property. But what I'm hearing is that struck now, correct? Or more readings to come?
Yes.
Yeah.
As it was voted on Monday night, it is out of it, or last Monday night, it was out of it at this point, but there's two more readings to make sure it stays out.
Okay.
Basically, so we put, yeah.
With that, how do, when there was a zoning issue?
I'm sorry, we're, I'm...
Well, yeah, it's just really to hear you. I mean, y'all are having a good conversation, so I didn't stop you, but I better stop you now. So, we just want to hear your opinions and concerns.
The other concern is notification to AGC owners or property owners in general. Here, we had this amendment that was coming that said, hey, we might introduce AG, or non-metallic whatever, to AGC property. I only heard of it because a friend had mentioned, did you hear about this, that it was a first reading already? You know, when we had a zoning issue, you know, very familiar with that letter that gets sent out. Where's the notification to other homeowners that there's something in the works that might affect adversely or not adversely to our properties for us to have our opinion so we can get plugged into this? How do I get notified?
We're going to let staff get with you on that. After, later on, not during the meeting, but staff will get with you on your concerns about that.
Okay. Because it seems fair that we should know what's going on with this.
Absolutely.
And when we pull up the website, there's nothing on it. I mean, it's not accessible.
Yeah, we're with you on that.
Okay, okay. And I guess the other thing, going back to the other, how can I get plugged in? I'm interested in the agritourism and what we just talked about with wineries. How do I get involved in that portion of it? Do I sit in on some of these meetings?
Well, I'm going to have the county manager get with you and answer any question you have in that regard.
Okay.
Bill Shanahan.
Thank you, Ken.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time. Anybody else opposed? Yes, sir.
My name's Scott Hesterman, 1129 Fenwick Court, Clover, South Carolina. Frankly, I listened to you read that. I don't know if I'm in favor of it or not.
Yeah.
But I will tell you this. May I read? Last fall, it was suggested to York County that concrete plants, quarries and landfills be approved only after careful consideration of exactly what is in proximity to them and what traffic the roads can handle. And that was turned down. Have you driven on Bethel School Road? Would you like to see cement trucks driving past your house in your middle school? Are you insane? And our observation, you seem quite concerned about the ordinances that exist and the ones that are proposed. Where do those ordinances and proposals come from?
Okay. Anybody else opposed? Uh, well, okay.
Hello, my name's Bill Nagoski. I live at 725 Admiral's Way in Clover. Is this directly related to allowing or disallowing the quarry on Ridge Road?
Audra, you want to answer that?
This is for non-metallic. The mining one is the next item.
That's what I needed to know.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else opposed? Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. Name is Mark Candary, I live at 3200 Chester Highway. Like Randy who spoke earlier, we were, you know, involved in this whole discussion last August regarding the zoning variance that was denied. We did a lot of homework with that issue. A little bit confused as to, I understand that AGC is off the table as of this moment. Got conflicting information as to whether or not it's potentially going to be reintroduced, but I'd like to think that maybe there's a possibility, if it truly is off the table, that that could be voted on tonight and this thing could be put to rest once and for all. Unlike the other issues that have been deferred, I don't see any reason why this needs to be deferred. This should be pretty clear-cut based on what you folks decided last August, because if you reintroduce AGC as an viable option, it really is completely contradictory to what you folks decided last summer. I don't need to go into a great deal on concrete if you're going to keep that off the table, but clearly, it's not in character with the comprehensive plan, the land use sections of that comprehensive plan that were adopted. You know, I don't need to go into the chapter and verse on that. I'm also concerned about the precedent that it sets if you allow things like concrete to pop up in an area that's been zoned AGC for generations. I mean, you have family farms that sit out in the western half of this county, many of which are fairly large. You have a situation where a patriarch dies, leaves the farm to three children, maybe only one of which still lives on the farm. The other two are somewhere else. So, what happens? The, you know, they have to settle the estate. It's possible that only one out of the three wants to maintain that farm, so they have no choice but to either buy out the other two family members to maintain that farm or it has to be sold so everybody can get their share of the proceeds. And so, maybe the decision is, child number one can't afford to buy out child two and three. So, there are no choices to put it up for sale. It's the only alternative. So, now you sell the farm, you have no idea whether the person who buys that farm has a motive to say, I'm going to pop a concrete plant on that parcel. So, now here you are, you live next door in a family farm that's been there for generations. Now, all of a sudden, your neighbors sold their property. Now, you have something undesirable in their opinion popping up. It really is a bad precedent to set. And as far as concrete goes, I'm not even sure that there really is a need for additional concrete production facilities in this county. I mean, time is money when it comes to concrete. If you're going to, if you have to put concrete on a truck and you have to ship it forty-five minutes to a site, that's extra time and money for the driver of the truck. You may have to put retardant in the concrete. in the concrete. It all comes at a premium. The raw materials need to come in by rail or by truck. They should come in off a thoroughfare, you know, like Route 77 corridor. Concrete plant belongs in an industrial-zoned area. There are available industrial properties for sale currently in York County. There are industrial parks that have, you know, undeveloped property. There's a currently idle concrete plant off of Route 5 down near the Bowwater facility, just over the border in Lancaster County. That is owned by Southern Concrete out of Asheville. They operate 30 concrete plants in North and South Carolina and Georgia. They have two plants in Charlotte. They've chosen to idle that plant. They obviously feel that they can produce sufficient concrete to meet demands out of their Westinghouse concrete facility, and no need to reactivate that plant. So I'm not sure what the overriding demand is that would necessitate, you know, finding multiple spots for concrete plants in, in the western half of this county. And that's pretty much, you know, what I wanted to point out. I really think that this should be able to be voted down without a deferral. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman Blackwell, I'd like to apologize to you for carrying on with conversation.
No, that's fine.
And also, I would like to apologize.
Gave me time to make some notes.
I'd like to apologize to that gentleman, because he did call me this morning and asked me to call him back before the meeting, because he had a question. And I got swamped and was not able to call him back before the meeting, so.
And I think he was really saying he was for. So anybody for this ordinance?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. Question on the motion.
Move to approve.
Nope. No, we got it, right. Question, it's my bad. I probably misled you with my hesitation. Question on the motion. All his favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose no. Now we need a new.
All right. Now, move to approve, and I'm, just so we're clear on all this, the amendment as it was, or the, the ordinance as it was amended on the last meeting with AGC out of the ordinance, it's not an option in AGC. So, that's what it says, but I'm just making that in my motion so that everyone understands.
Right. It's in the minutes. Anybody else?
Move to approve.
There being, yes.
Move to approve. Looking for a second.
Okay. Discussion. Any further discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
They, yeah, I basically didn't support this last time, not because I thought we ought to put concrete plants in AGC, but because the way it was written, there was nowhere for concrete plants to go unless they were in AGC. So when we took that out and did nothing else, it, it basically invoked pending, there was two reasons invoking pending ordinance, that's no longer relevant. But the other issue about there's nowhere for them to go is still there, even as a special exception under ID, because of the separation requirements and the restriction of hours into operation. My understanding is staff would have no objection and that there would be places, wouldn't have to add, had to come up with a creative idea like putting them in AGC if we were to remove the separation requirements from the overlay districts and remove the restriction on hours of operation as suggested in our minutes, I mean, our summary.
Is this discussion?
Yes, Ms. Love.
So, I would, I would agree with that with two exceptions. And I know that removing these overlays, separation doesn't make a huge difference. It makes a little bit of difference, but there are two that I feel like probably need to, we need to maintain as part of this ordinance. And that would be the Lake Wylie and Catawba River buffers and the AGC and RUD significant historical and architectural sites overlay. I know what we spent to route a road around a historical home, so I certainly don't think we would be putting a concrete plant any closer than that to one. So I just feel like of these, and, and just so that everybody knows what's listed here, we have an airport overlay, the Lake Wylie zoning overlay, the Lake Wylie and Catawba River buffers, the scenic overlay, and then finally, the AGC and RUD significant historical and architectural sites overlay. The scenic overlay, my future intent is to beef that up so that it does do something besides just prevent single wides. And I think we can address some more things when that comes up. But the, the two, I think, aren't going to make that much difference to keep would be the Lake Wylie and Catawba River buffers and the significant historical and architectural sites overlay.
Any, Ms. Cox?
I, I'd like a showing of hands. If you came out because you're concerned that we are putting concrete plants in AGC, would you just raise your hand and let me see if that's why you came out?
Well, if you want to.
Okay. Thank you for coming out. What, what concerns me and what confuses me is that it seems like the information didn't make it to you, and that is, is a frustration of mine. I'm going to back up and give you a little bit of background. When this thing came up, basically, what, what the status was is that a concrete plant can go in industrial, period. By right, you had nothing, you couldn't do anything about it. What we wanted to make sure, or at least what I wanted to make sure, is that there's a special exception, that whatever is going to come in, if it's a concrete plant, it needs to make sure that it goes through a process of review, not just be automatically allowed. So when we had a workshop on this, that was, that was what I understood we were immediately going to do, was require a special exception so that there is some review and that there are some restrictions placed on ID. How, how AGC got proposed to open it up and open it up to any concrete plant to come in by special exception, it certainly wasn't done by me, and I don't think it was done by council, obviously oppose that. What this does is it, and what this ordinance says, which we, which it looks like we're going to pass on the second reading, is that we're only going, we're not going to expand cement plants. They only can go in industrial, and they can only go there after a special exception. So there's an added layer of protection to folks who have that district in, that district near them. Although it was proposed at the last meeting, the AGC be added in, that is not what happened. And the four council members that, that passed it on made sure that, that we didn't do that. We didn't need to expand it into an entirely new area that's, that's AGC, which is a lot of my district, and allow that. So that's where we are. That's what I think is right. There is this question about, is there enough space now with the additional buffer requirements that we've also added to even allow one? And I think that's, the problem that I'm having with that is that we don't have any data to even suggest what do we need to take care of York County, just like trash or any other thing. We don't need to take in something that's not, something that York County generated. We need to take care of what, what our needs. And so, one thing that does concern me a bit is the, is the notice. And I don't know if there was anything that was on the website that folks could have gone and gotten a clear message. It sounds like there wasn't. But we have just spent a lot of money on a, on a, upping our website, and there should be a mechanism in place. And I hope this council will do this, is that folks that want to know when there's a sweeping change in a certain district in AGC, that they get notified and that they know what's going to happen through that email. I hope that we go back and that we look and see and make sure that, that folks are able to get that notice. If they want to sign up for it, put their email on it, which it sounds like these folks do, that, that they get that and they aren't hearing about it secondhand from a friend next door and maybe, maybe getting bad information.
Bill, can you make sure that the notification and total description is real clearly put in the website so people can pull it up and see what we're considering and get all, you know, pertinent information they need so they can call their council member or whoever to get more definitive answers? Mr. Johnson, and then Mr. Williams.
The motion on the floor was to simply approve the ordinance we passed two weeks ago. And I voted for it to make sure that AGC wasn't affected by it. I am a little concerned that we have not gone back and added any of the additional parts of this would actually, I mean, the goal, or at least my goal, is not to stop concrete plants in York County. That should not be our goal here. I, I certainly don't see a need for concrete plants or non-metallic mineral product manufacturing in AGC. That's why it's not in, not in this ordinance. But we should adopt something other, hopefully tonight, that will open it back up at some level in ID. And, and if we're not going to do that, I'm, I'm going to have a tough time at third reading approving just a total ban, basically, of concrete plants in York County. And that's going to be my, my issue here. And I, and I'm happy to pass this through tonight, but at some point, we have to say, hey, if you're zoned industrial, and that's where concrete plants belong, is in industrial, you should still be allowed to open one and just not have a blanket, oh, we've now stopped this all over the county. Whether or not they will open is a, someone said a minute ago, the market will dictate that. And that's absolutely right. The market will, but the market can't dictate anything if there is no market for it in York County. So.
Mr. Williams.
Yeah, I guess, staff, question for staff. I guess you want me to give this to Audrey, like you said earlier. They, with, removing the separation requirements from all overlay districts, if we remove the ones that Ms. Love talked about, is the staff still okay with that and still think that we can locate?
Yes, those won't affect it too much. There's still, just to be clear, there's still not a lot of properties available.
Right.
But it does give them a few more.
Well, that's what I was, that's what I was going to guess, but I just wanted to make sure. So I will support the motion if we add that condition, if they add those two conditions that, that the management has recommended, which includes remove separation requirement from all overlay districts except the Lake Wylie Catawba River buffers and the AGC and RUD significant historical and architectural sites overlay, and number two, remove restriction on hours of operation.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Are you accepting it?
Yes.
And who made the second?
Robert made the motion.
Robert made the motion.
I think I made it.
Oh, okay. Well, you're good with that? And you're good with this? Okay.
But I, I would like to say one thing. I'd like to say a couple things. There's a whole lot I'd like to say. But this, this came about for a reason. And this is going to maybe, you know, answer your question as far as allowing and not allowing and that kind of thing. But in, in my district, we have a concrete plant that's at the corner of, is it, Riddle Mill and 557? I'm sorry. Riddle Mill.
There was somebody in there.
Yeah, somebody in this room. But on the corner of Riddle Mill and 557. Last fall, we found out, I found out, and I was shocked to find out, that we had a little section of industrial area zoned right on Bethel School Road. And what's coming there? A concrete plant. So I was shocked. And here's part of the problem with that. Here's a lot of the problem with that. A concrete truck weighs, can weigh with concrete 67,000 pounds. So not only now do we have within a quarter mile of each other two concrete plants, but they're using the same little cut-through road, Bethel School Road, which technically should not have had any industrial on it. You know, the little shop that's there, it's okay. It's been there a very long time. It's industrial. So the problem is not only that we're allowing this use where it shouldn't be allowed, but that we have allowed it and we didn't have a way to say no, because we already have one a quarter mile from you. And you're both going to be using the same road. So it's not the, that, it's not, and that's a state road. It's not that the road can't handle the weight of the concrete truck. It's that the width of the road, that's the biggest, that's the biggest issue. And so I believe that two things need to happen. I believe that York County needs to be able to look out for the people by saying, you know, we're, you're going to have to ask for a special exception. And then when they go for their special exception, it doesn't mean that they're not allowed. It just means that we've considered everything like that that could happen. And Bethel School Road, I mean, really? So, so I just think that's an issue. I also feel like that we should get something from SEDOT before we allow these concrete plants that says, yes, this, this road is going to qualify, or, or the, this road, the standard for this road is okay. Because we don't do that currently. And, and so we have a problem in my district now with two concrete plants within a quarter mile of each other, 557, and both traveling at a very high rate of speed, mind you, in concrete trucks. And it's not just the concrete trucks that are, that are traveling these roads. It's the delivery of what they use to make the concrete in 18-wheelers that are also traveling this road. I personally was run off the road. I took a picture of the truck as it passed me, because I had to get over, and.
No, that was just an angry constituent.
It could have been. But he was driving an 18-wheeler, and he was speeding. I've tried to get the sheriff to give me a blue light.
Incognito.
I just can't get it. But, but, you know, and then I went and took pictures of the mining operation and everything that's there, you know, and the, and the, the road that's messed up. And, and, and they've been good. You know what? They're local people, and they said that we're, we're willing to do whatever we need to do. And I think they need to concrete the road right there. We need to get them together with SEDOT and concrete that part of the road, because when the truck turns in, it's just making a divot right there, and the rest of us are driving through it. But there is a need for York County to be able to say no when we need to. It means that we can allow it when it's, when it's the right thing to do, and we can not allow it when it's not the right thing to do. So this, this puts us in the driver's seat. And so that's why this has come to be from the beginning. And I feel very strongly about the fact that it needs to pass. And, you know, York County's got to be in the driver's seat in every, in everything that we do. I mean, we're York County, and we're responsible and accountable to you. And I think that this, this puts us in the right spot.
Any, anybody else?
Mr. Jim, one last thing. Audrey, would you please include a map in our next agenda?
That's a good point.
Reflecting this change, so we can see what the map, based on the ordinance that we're about to adopt tonight. Because you showed us maps with variations on a theme, but I'd like to see one that actually shows what we just, what we're about to do.
And let, yeah, we're going to, I have to, don't go there. The, the concern that I had on the first reading was that I was open to a first reading, but pending ordinance totally took it away, because I, I wasn't about to agree to anything like that. I feel like that kind of rams it down the people's throat, and they have no option to discuss any options. So I wasn't going to support that. But with the change Mr. Williams has made, I'm still interested in seeing that map, because I, I certainly agree, AGC, agricultural land's not the best place for it. I'm a hunter. I love the outdoors. And I certainly see that logic. But when you shut down industrial completely, which those setbacks did, it made it, well, they can go in industrial, but there's no place that any industrial land we have will fit in the county. I mean, it's, it's, I'm not, I believe in transparency and being straight with the voters and straight with the landowners and, and the business people. And if it essentially eliminates any option of a cement plant in York County, to me, that's insane. So, you know, I, I couldn't go there. But with the change, if maybe this opens the door to make it a practical option for the industrial land that we have, certainly, I think that's the best place for it. But down the road, if there were an agricultural parcel of land way out where the guy owned 3,000 acres and it wouldn't affect anybody but him, and he wanted it, and we needed one, and the business said, hey, we'll put one there, I didn't want to close the door to any practical option. But per the changes that, amendment that Mr. Williams recommended, I'll support second reading. Question on the motion, all his favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 155, Zoning Code, so as to reclassify mining to major resource extraction and minor resource extraction based on size of operation and duration, to provide for regulatory provisions related thereto, to amend the definition and use table in order to establish the uses and provide for the districts in which they are allowed or removed, to establish major and minor resource extraction as a special exception used in AGC and ID, to establish only minor resources extraction as a special exception in AGC and light industrial, and to remove all reference to mining and RUD and UD, making it a prohibited use, to amend supplemental regulations in AGC, AGC 1, ID, and light industrial in order to address items such as hours of operation, dust reduction measures, adoption of a performance standards agreement, development or an access and routing plan, a fencing plan, an in-use plan, and proof of other required permit approvals, and where applicable, provide for separation requirements, setback screening and operations plan, and limited extension provisions, and to provide for other miners related thereto. Anybody want to speak against? Anybody want to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
My name is Robert Doolin. I reside at 1832 Doolin Road, Clover, South Carolina. Four years ago, I appeared before this council, along with 300 or so of my friends. And we wanted to let council know that we didn't want a rock quarry that was being contemplated by Martin Marietta Materials in our neighborhood in Bowling Green. We still don't want that rock quarry. And of course, Martin Marietta still does. They're still acquiring land in that area. I have a few more friends came tonight to help me, help support me in this effort, and some of them may want to speak also. At the time that we came, the only recourse for us at that time was to oppose a zoning request that Martin Marietta was making, to take an, a land that was residential and move it back to AGC so then they could go get the special exception. But we support this, this ordinance that's before us because it would put more restrictions in there and let us understand what's going on when it happens. And just wanted to let you know that we, we do support this item as shown.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else want to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Jeff Tubisky, 312 Brigadier Drive in Clover. And just in. Hi, I'm Jeff Tubisky, 312 Brigadier Drive in Clover. And just in support of what Mr. Doolin said and the rest of us that appeared here this evening, just wanted to put before you that, you know, the health and the welfare of your constituency should be first and foremost, regardless of economic value of other things. We take a look at our concerns of what mining could bring. I'm only a stone's throw from where the edge of where Martin might propose their particular quarry. Air quality and concerns with those of us that are on wells, the blasting and potential fracturing of our foundations, our pools, and never mind the, the economic impact of us leaving the area. This is a great little town that brought us in ten years ago. Wonderful people, wonderful school system, and really looking for you to stand up for the constituents that are here and protect us and our livelihoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to speak in favor? Yes, ma'am.
Hey there. When you said against, I didn't move fast enough, and I'm not quite sure, because honestly, this is a bit confusing to me. But it's a pleasure to see y'all again. I live on Green Pond Road, Marie McFadden at 910, and I feel like the way that the land was acquired was in a clandestine sort of fashion, and I fully agree with you, Ms. Allison, about getting notification out. I'm here because I was with Allison and keep York County beautiful, but I stayed because my neighbor texted me and said, are they talking about it yet? I'm stuck in church. And so, I think that if we can improve the notification to folks and to help them understand, like, I can read this, and I have a master's, but I'm not quite sure what this is, because I don't understand it. But if it's saying, let's do the right thing, the concerns, I think, with this are the same as they are with the concrete, your quality of life, the condition of the roads, and we're finally getting some roads that are done nicely, and those are the same roads that the trucks are gonna be coming across. So, I appreciate y'all taking the time to listen and protect. There's a balance between bringing industry in and bringing money into the county, and then protecting the quality of life for people that live there, and I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else want to speak in favor?
Can I speak against?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Tina Benton. I live on Bethel School Road. The land that I'm on has been in my husband's family since the seventies, early seventies, and before that, other family as well. So, there's a long history there. Bethel School Road is a very quiet residential area. There are a few businesses there, but they're so hidden that most people have no idea that there is a business there. I realize that the people that want to do the industrial use have a right to do it, but that doesn't mean that they should be able to do it. And I don't understand how a cement pan, a plant can be, excuse me. I'm sorry. Do it, should I sit down?
No, I was kinda getting confused, because you said you're against, but this is-
No, no, I asked if I could speak for, and you said, come on up. So, I'm sorry, you, you didn't hear yourself correctly.
Okay, well, that's, that's my, I apologize for not hearing you correctly.
Well, I just want to say that I don't understand how a plant like that could operate in this location. Personally, I live on the same side of the road. There is no county water, sewer, anything. In fact, I have an additional acre that I wanted to get rezoned or cut out so that an individual could build a home on it if I chose to market it. And I went through a process with York County for over two and a half to three years, and was, it, I was turned down two or three times. I never, I never understood that. I never understood it, because an individual home on a one-acre lot seems like a logical thing. So, my, my problem is, is this plant able to get exceptions from York County for the utilities that would be required to operate such a plant? And have they done or been asked to do, or is it completed, a traffic impact study, and a, a study of the impact on the environment, a study on the impact of the school that's at the, the end of the very short road that is an elementary school? Have they been asked to do that? Are they required to do that? And what about the other properties on this two-mile road, and it is curvy, and it is narrow? What about the other properties on the road that are still currently, right now, zoned industrial? Is anything going to change with that? Are we always going to be worrying about what kind of pollution is gonna be brought right to us this year, or next year, or the year after? I, I know that industry is needed, but there is a cement plant across the street from one of the ends of Bethel School Road. Are y'all aware of that? Did it go into consideration? I, I really would like to have more openness, and I'd like to be able to, to get answers to the basic things that the people who live on this small street really deserve. And as was mentioned, the narrowness of the road, the people that live directly across the street from this piece of property, I don't see how the truck could avoid going into their ditch, up to their front door, because their home is very, very close to this narrow street. I don't, I don't object to industry as an ongoing decision, but I just don't think that it's appropriate for this area. And we're already experiencing pain, extreme pain, as Allison knows very well, from all of the mass development that has come in so fast and been allowed with, it seems like, I guess, not the forethought of the impact on the people. And I feel like that, as the previous lady mentioned, that that should be the first consideration for y'all who do represent us.
I appreciate you coming, Tina.
Yeah, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Anybody else for the ordinance?
For the rock quarry ordinance.
Well, maybe like some, I may be a little confused for or against, but my name is, my name is D. Wise. I live at 626 Thorncliff Drive in York, in York, South Carolina. I'm a for, a former Clover Town Council member, and I'm also, of course, a resident and a small business owner in Lake Wiley. And quality of life is very important to the residences and the business owners of District Two. Obviously, the county, but of course, District Two, where we are now. We see a growth in residences and traffic in our district, and we don't want to see an increase in cement trucks and gravel trucks on our roads. They'll have a negative impact on safety, on water, on our roads, and residences. Please help us to keep our district safe, clean, and a wonderful place to live, and please restrict gravel plants and concrete plants in our district. Thank you.
Okay. Dicky, did you want to speak? It doesn't matter if we're against, whatever.
Well, I'm confused.
This is about the mining.
I'm confused.
This is about the mining.
As you were.
Mining ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This, this encore presentation, Dicky Harper, 6370 Old York Road. This time, I don't want to be confused with, uh, representing the Foreign Bureau. We believe in private, private property rights. But the problem I have is with the special exceptions. I don't know how often special exception is used. I can understand when people come in with a variance, with special exception. When it goes to the zoning board of appeals, I feel like this puts a tremendous burden on them to make the decision, to make the right decision, and there's no other, if you read, there's no other appeal except to go to court. I would like for it to be another step, where it comes back to y'all, to the elected officials, or either directly to the elected officials. On something as big as a quarry or something involving that, I, I feel like this is big enough that it deserves to come before y'all. And that's my only concern with the special exemption, exception, particularly in AGC. Special exception in AGC. Thank you. Thank you once again. Thank y'all for all you do.
Appreciate it. And Audrey, could you clarify that point, special exception for the audience and for people here, so they'll know what that means, related to AGC-1 and light industrial?
Yes. In the, just to be clear, in the current ordinance, mining is already an allowed use in AGC with a special exception. That means that the use is not permitted outright, and they have to go to the zoning board of appeal to get their approval.
And, and per the point made, they can't come to council, and ZBA has the final word as it's a special exception?
When it's a special exception, yes. The state law dictates that it go to the ZBA.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else for, or? It just goes to the ZBA zoning board of appeals, so they have, we can't override the ZBA. They have all the power. So, if it goes to them, what they decide, that's it. Yes, sir. And here again, just for or against?
Good evening. My name is Bill Davis, and I live at 179 Bethel Church Road in Clover for the last forty-two years. I am aware, and I believe, that the ordinance that you're gonna vote on tonight in the affirmative means that you are not supporting the moving forward on a gravel plant. Is that correct?
Audrey, you want to-
So, I'm trying to decide whether I'm in favor or opposed.
I think, I think there's, I think there's a little confusion. This isn't whether you support a gravel plant or don't support a gravel plant. These ordinances are not specific to a particular piece of property. It applies to all mining operations, no matter where they are. And whether the particular one we're talking about could move forward based on this ordinance, off the top of my head, I don't, I don't know. I do know that they are split-zoned, and they are not correctly zoned today on the existing ordinance, and they wouldn't be zoned correctly if this ordinance is passed as well.
Thank you. In any event, I'd like to speak against allowing a gravel plant to be placed anywhere near Ridge Road and, and Clover. Now, I don't live directly in that area. I'm maybe a mile or two away, but I travel that road a lot, and I can tell you that that is some beautiful property, that is prime property to be developed for residential type development. And I'm concerned that if we allowed a, a gravel plant to plop down in the middle of this beautiful property, not only would it destroy the property values of the residences that live nearby, not necessarily me, but other residences, but it would put a screaming stop to any further developments in the way of residential development in that area. Nobody's going to want to buy property and build a house that's in the close vicinity of a concrete plant, as we've also heard, or in a mining operation. I also want to tell you that I'm a member of the Sierra Club in South Carolina, and that the Sierra Club has an interest in this project, or the members have an interest in it. I'm not speaking for the Sierra Club, but I am speaking as a member of the Sierra Club, that we're aware of this operation, that we are against the location of a gravel plant, and anything that we can do to slow down or stop that operation, for all the reasons that people have said here tonight, the health reasons, as well as the, the traffic and the disruption and the property value impact. We're very much against it. We are, as a Sierra Club member, I am very much in favor of healthy cities and healthy communities. And I do not feel that allowing a gravel plant contributes to a healthy community. Thank you very much.
And just to re-clarify, the, these, this one's kind of supporting his concerns and everybody I'm hearing, really, it's, you ought to be for this ordinance, because it kind of provides what you're looking for.
Right. Thank you for that clarification. I'd like to ask if it's permissible that, that any people in the audience are here that are with my approach, if they would raise their hand, so we could just get some-
Just quietly. Thank, thank you.
I would, thank you.
And I thought y'all were here for a winery.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, sir. In favor of the-
Yes, sir.
Okay.
In favor of the ordinance. My name is Mac Winget. I live at 1202 Green Pond Road in Clover, South Carolina. I'm a fairly new Clover resident. Moved down here four years ago. My brother followed me last year. My father followed me this year. So, we've got now three Wingets living in Clover. Proud to be here. We've got Jackson Blood-
My predecessor used to say, or my previous girlfriend, welcome to York County. Welcome home.
Good, good to be here. Good to be here. But my family, my brother, my father included, all making investments in the community. My mom's moving her business down to Lake Wiley. We're here to stay and, and proud to be here. I'm related to Dicky Harper. Proud to be here. We are firmly against having a, a rock quarry, having a concrete plant in the area. We're gonna grow this area just fine without those sorts of businesses in Clover and in York County. We certainly, they should be in the appropriate places, but, and certainly support business. I'm a businessman as well, but want them to be in the appropriate places. So, appreciate y'all, you know, supporting us, and I don't see a single person here speaking for these things. So, obviously, we're all passionate about it. Appreciate y'all's time. Appreciate y'all's support. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else want to speak? Yes, ma'am. Ladies first.
So, this is way out of my comfort zone, so excuse me if I start to stumble.
Oh, you're fine.
You're doing great.
Just be sure to give your, be sure to give your name and address.
Oh, my name is Leigh Anne Hayes, and I live on Colonna's Court, near Green Pond. I'm kind of a double hit. My parents live on Bethel School Road, directly from the cement plant where it's gonna go in. And I live stone's throw away from where the quarry's gonna go. We bought our house last April. And I feel like, I, I've grown up in Clover. I take a lot of pride in Clover. I think it's a beautiful place. I think there's a lot of potential. But when I think of these things coming in, it makes me want to leave. And I think other people feel that way. I just wanted to paint that picture. My children play, I mean, we're gonna be breathing all that dust. My parents are eighty. They can't breathe all that dust directly across from the cement plant, so, sorry, I'm getting emotional. But thank you for listening.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
You wear pride.
Oh, I have no idea who you are.
My name's Don Love. I live at 532 Ridge Road. I'm against the quarry. Don't get me wrong, but I got a question for you. We hit the same thing last time when this came up, that it went back to the planning commission after so many days, months, or whatever, they could reposition, and if the planning commission approved it, y'all had no say so. That can't be right. I mean, they can bypass y'all as county council if they go for the exception. And is that not what you said?
The exception's to the ZBA, not the planning commission. Zoning Board of Appeals is kind of a special state mandated board, where the council has no say. Like this special exception on this would have to go to the ZBA, the only place it could go.
Okay, but if, but if they, even though they were turned down, you, because they didn't meet the ordinance, and you wouldn't give, the county council wouldn't give them an exception, they could go there and still get, get that exception passed?
ZPA could grant it for the special exception.
Well, I've lived there on that, well, my house is built where I used to pick cotton when I was a kid. And there was a rock quarry down there on Green Pond Road, and it shook the windows in our house where my nephew lives right now. And it's, and it was further away than the one they trying to put in right now. And they gonna put all the traffic on Ridge Road, where before they went two different directions, because they had a big hill to pull each way. But it rattled the windows at our house, and they would blast at night and everything else. So, it's, I don't know whether you can put more teeth to it. I think this is- I think this is good. It's a stopping point, but I don't think it's enough teeth in there to see what they do. Because, I mean, they would blast at night and then grind the rock during the day. And I guarantee you, that's what this, they, the same company put it in there. They crushed enough rock to fix Highway 321 and widen it to four lanes, and they left and left the rest of the stuff that they didn't sell to the gentleman that owned the land and gave it right back to him, left him a set of scales and a bulldozer to load the gravel with, and he sold gravel for years till it was gone. So, I mean, I don't know whether you can get more teeth in it or not, but there's a way around it, even if y'all don't approve it when they ask for, for the change in the zoning. And it's something to look at. But I mean, this is a start. It might determine that, but if they got enough money, they're going to get what they want. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Well, go ahead if you want to clarify.
So we did limit, the hours for blasting has been limited on this, hasn't it? That's part of, that is?
Per your motion, yes.
Well, per the future motion.
Yeah. No, it was limited with the original motion.
Oh, it's already included. So we probably need to have it included during this motion. Anybody else?
Thank you for having me up here again. It's Bill Nagoski, 725 Admirals Way. I'm probably .6 miles from here. And just by way of background, just so you'll know, I have some kind of vested interest in not allowing this to take place in my neighborhood. Resident for about twenty-seven years on and off. So we hit water in our well at about seventy-seven feet. If you want to take a look at what happens to a rock quarry when you start to blast and pull things out of the ground, all you got to do is go up to King's Mountain, go out to the Gateway Trail parking lot, which is a Carolina thread trail, walk three, .3 tenths of a mile, and you will see the fence around the crater, which was a mine. And at the bottom of that mine is a lake. Okay? So by scale, you can just go and visually see that if you've never seen one before. So what happens is, what could potentially happen to me is that I would get groundwater contamination, and I wouldn't be able to drink the water. I don't know where my aquifer, what direction it flows. I have no idea. How could I? Right? So these are things to think about for me. Now, I'm a long-term resident. I've been here a long time. A lot of people may say, hey, I'm at the work nine to five. People are blasting. It truly not going to bother me. I don't have that luxury. I live on and off at home. I don't work. I'm retired. Okay? I may be so bold as to speak for people on welfare, people that are unemployed, looking for work, don't have work, don't intend to work, homeless, whoever else I want to speak for, they're at home during the day. And if you would like to, and I invite all of you, you can come out to my house at 725 Admiral Way, sit in the back patio, have a cup of coffee with me, and see if you don't enjoy that. I enjoy that very much. Okay? That's why I live and love York County. Okay? These are simple things, but when you're not working, you try to do a lot of simple things, so they don't cost you a lot of money. I think we're setting a dangerous precedent by not killing this as best we could. And potentially, I don't know if you do, I don't know if you don't particularly, you have the power to kill this. Once an area is being mined, it is no longer pristine. If this is, if these mines start to penetrate local zoning, others will follow close behind. There's another thing that you may or may not know about. It's called scale-up. So once these people get in, and there's a profit motive involved, there are shareholders involved, and there's a motive to make profit. I think you understand what that is. So what happens is, there's little to prevent these miners from expanding the scope of their project how they want to do it. Now, you can put penalties, you can do things like that, EPA regulations and stuff like that. And I'm, you know, I'm an American. I believe in all that stuff. But we're talking about .6 miles from my home. There are some people sitting behind me that are .5 miles from this proposed place. And there are also people that are not here that live .1 mile, live on my same road. I'm not saying I'm speaking for them. I'm just telling you what the facts are. Finally, let me, let me tell you the last thing that I think's important. I'm not naive enough to not understand that there is a monetary thing involved with some of these things. And there could be a potential economic impact to our county, and there could be money made for the county. But I want to refute that under a couple of principles, okay? And by way of refuting this, I want you to understand that I come with a little bit of experience. In 1991, 92, and 93, I personally was a department head and worked in the risk management office. Okay? I was the department head in this building. Okay? I was hired and interviewed by Gene Clu. You may not know who this guy is. Okay? I was hired, and I worked with a young lady that was by the name of Paula Wayne. And she was a special projects coordinator for this county. She worked directly at Gene Clu, right, right next door to him. She would come down to my office and ask me to work on special projects. I'm telling you this. Why am I telling you this? I worked, I ran the computer department. I knew how to use a spreadsheet. So she would come down, and we would do three, five, seven, ten, fifteen-year studies of things, of projects, special projects. So what I'm saying is, as part of that, when I actually worked here, I did these studies. I would challenge you and respectfully request that you look at the tax base, because again, I'm not naive about the money. Okay? Does the tax base need the extra money? I submit to you that it does not. In my hand, right here, I have four tax bills for my property at 725 Admirals Way. Okay? These tax bills, over the last four years, on average, have decreased over 3%. Do you understand what I'm saying? In other words, I challenge you to go to another county somewhere close by and see where property taxes have gone down. Because I know a little bit about what goes on in the county, that means that the tax base is fairly secure, or I would be getting a raise in taxes. Very simple formula, okay? So this is the money thing. I'm saying to you that we don't necessarily need the money. If that's one of the motives, and I don't know what the motives are, I don't know what you have considered, I would propose to you to do a special project to look at this. Go five to seven years back and see if we need this money. If you're having problems, do that, and you want to do that, I'll give my number to Karen. I don't work. I volunteer my time. I'll come down here and do it with you. Okay? So that's where I'm coming from on this. I want to finally tell you that I haven't been here pitching my budget or doing these things, the county council, a lot of years. But I want to tell you, from what I have seen of these folks, you folks sitting up here, with the exception of the person that's not here, I think you're reasonable, practical, caring, and very careful. And I want you to keep, keep going that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And I think.
I didn't plan on saying anything at all tonight, but I guess, my name's Bill Aker. Live at 143 Lawson Lakes Drive in Clover. And that whole area, all that rock, anything that happens on that rock, I feel it in my house. I think most, everybody that lives here, anything happens on any of that rock, anywhere out there, it doesn't have to be a stick of dynamite. It can be guys putting in cable with a trencher, and when it hits that granite that's three feet underground, it shakes that, everything within a quarter of a mile of there. So I can only imagine, once they start digging holes and blasting and whatever they have to do, and what it's going to happen to the groundwater supply and all that, because I, you know, I just totally for this, I think I got it right now, totally for this, this motion.
God bless you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for? Yes, yes, sir. Well, sorry, I want to do ladies first.
Hi, I'm George Knox, 377 Glen Road, Clover, South Carolina. And I'm for the amendment, you know, but I want to find a way to shut this down permanently. We were here three years ago with over a hundred people. People hate this thing. Nobody wants it in our area. It's not needed. I've been living, I'm living on property that, I'm the fourth generation on that same property. I hope that one of my sons has already built on property, and I'm hoping that successive generations will be able to build there. But I, I go out to my mailbox now, and I fear for my life for trucks just going down the road. I petitioned a number of years ago, had the speed limit drop from 55 to 45. All that meant is now they go 70 instead of 80. So, you know, the roads are bad enough, the traffic is incredibly over, you know, I've lived there most of my life. Used to be you could walk up and down the road and never see a car. And now, just going to the mailbox is a scary ordeal. So, you know, three years ago, we were here, it seems like you're just trying, somebody's trying to backdoor this thing in. Nobody that lives in that area wants this. We need to find a way to knock this out permanently and not be back here a year, or two, or three years, or 10 years from now. It's not needed. That area is growing to the point to where there's enough residential. We don't need that kind of complex anywhere in that area. They can go to Westing House, they can go to one of their other 10 or 11 plants to get it. Thank you for your help, and let's try to figure out a way to get this permanently off the record.
Thank you, sir. The Gasol Lady? Yes, ma'am.
Kathy Nagoski, 725 Admirals Way. I just wanted to point out that right now, in, on Bethel Street, by the First United Methodist Church and Wells Fargo, they're trying to trench to get water over to the new apartment buildings, and they cannot even blast that. They have to jackhammer that. They were going to have to bring in diamond drill bits and everything to get through this rock. And I live just, you know, less than a mile from this proposed property. And one day, the house shook, and I went outside to see if a tree had fallen on the house, or if an automobile had come into my house. I went outside, and there was no evidence of anything. And I really feel that somebody did some sort of blasting. And I know a friend of mine, when they were just digging down into this rock at the Methodist Church, First United Methodist Church, two feet to get the elevator shaft to go down so they could have it at ground level, on Pinewood Road at the end, her foundation was split. It was cracked, and she got mold in her house, and it just took over one side of her home. It took her $30,000 to get that mold problem fixed because she has a slab foundation. And that was probably, I don't know if it's even a mile, but it may have been a mile and a quarter to her house from just going to make an elevator shaft. So I'm just trying to point out the fragileness of this rock and how far any blasting extends. This, the town of Clover is aware, because even trying to put water over to the new apartment building, they've been very cautious about how they proceeded with jackhammering instead of blasting with anything more powerful to generate more problems. So just wanted to point that out and for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Good evening. Thank you, thank you for allowing us to step forward without being on the docket. My name is Tom Crates. I live at 430 Glen Road, and I am Georgia's neighbor. I just found out about this meeting here two days ago. And so I appreciate you hearing this out. I have, want to make two statements and then ask a couple of questions. First, about 15 years ago, back in the old days, if you will, we had some telephone outages, two occasions. When the Bell Telephone tech came out, repaired the lines, he said, well, part of your problem is, is there's been a lightning strike. And my response was, well, not that I know of, and nowhere near us. And he said, well, there is a rock line that runs down through your area. Well, it happens to be all over the area. And he said, what happens is, there could be a lightning strike two miles up the road, and it will follow the rock line. And so I only add that because of if there were to be blasting in the area, I agree with everyone that's spoken about that, there could be huge problems in this area. There's so much rock around. We also live, our property adjoins Beaver Dam Creek. Beaver Dam Creek is probably one of the most pristine creeks in the area that I can think of. Back when we had our drought, maybe seven, eight years ago, water was still flowing in Beaver Dam Creek. I'm not sure where it comes from. I would assume the headwaters go on past, on up in towards Crowder Mountain. Okay, the question I have is, you mentioned something about hours of blasting would be limited. Did I understand you correctly?
Eight to seven.
So it sounds to me like you're already, it's on the books that you would allow blasting. Does that open up for a Martin Marietta to come in? Or explain to me, I'm not understanding.
Well, Audrey, if you want to give clarification?
The, no, this isn't about, this ordinance, again, isn't about Martin Marietta. I need to state that clearly for the record. This ordinance applies to all mining operations in the county, whether you're Martin Marietta or whoever. This doesn't open the door for anybody. It makes it more restrictive on anybody coming in wanting to do a mining operation, in addition to requiring special exceptions in certain zoning districts. There's minimum separation requirements, there's road access, operation plans, lots of things that are being required. Without the clarification on the hours of operation for blasting, blasting could have occurred basically whenever the mine was operating. So it's been actually narrow, it's been narrowed. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much. Yeah. And my, my last question is, the zoning board, how do we know? How, how are we notified? If this can go to the zoning board, and it passes over county council, which you have no power to keep them from passing this, is that correct? Or allowing someone to come in?
We have no control over ZBA. What's the notification process for the ZBA?
For the ZBA?
Hearings.
For hearings. We post the sign on the property, there's a legal ad, and then we send out notice cards. And I believe, and I apologize if I don't know it off the top of my head, I believe for a special exception, it's either 300 or 500 feet within the radius of the property with a minimum of 30 property owners being notified.
And Audrey, you can sign up. I'm sorry. The email, I mean, the purpose of us having this website revision was to allow folks to go online and say, hey, I live here, here's my email, I want to know when something comes in a radius of X, when there's a ZBA meeting that addresses that. Is that, I've signed up for it, and I think that we need to go back and tweak it, but that's an option that folks have as well.
Yes. We do it by district. They can sign up to be notified of rezonings, variances, special exceptions by council district. So anything, if they sign up for council district five, they will get a notice of the matters on the agenda for council.
How do you sign up? You go online, do you come to?
Go to York County Gov. Go to YorkCountyGov.com. They'll notify me, and then you can click on the different district numbers.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else want to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
My name's Dave Horn. I'm at 524 Ridge Road in Clover. Been a York County resident for about 27 years now. Raised three children here in York County. I love the area. I grew up in Charlotte. Moved to this area for the simple fact, a quiet, peaceful, you know, surrounded community, but we still can kind of take advantage of being in Charlotte in, you know, 15 or 20 minutes. The area that I'm at's corner of Green Pond and Ridge. I literally could see the site if they took trees down from our property. Been a business owner in York County. I have a small property management company. So we have rental property around the county that just would affect, you know, potential people coming in, knowing that there's going to be a quarry and blasting and things going on. Also have a little small hobby farm where we raise animals. We're part of the agritourism association also, and part of York County Growers and Farmers Market Association. We do, small produce we sell. We raise grass-fed beef, pork, and chicken from animals that are feeding off the, the stuff that's grown around York County, hay included, that would be covered in silica dust, which, if anybody's researched, is a cancer-causing dust that prevailing winds can cause it to travel up to five miles. The groundwater, of course, when we were here four years ago with Martin Marietta, they did not deny that there wouldn't be problems with groundwater. They said they would handle it, they would take care of it. And I just had to, you know, use them. I know we're talking about all of York County, but the flat rock, which if you've grown up around here, you know, if you ever go to Google you've grown up around here, you know, if you ever go to Google Maps and look, this flat rock carries miles and miles all the way over Bear Shiba Road, and you can see it very plainly. And when they start fracturing these layers, where the surface quarry is, which I've walked out on, which is literally, like I said, walking distance from our property, when they used to bring it out, it comes in slabs. There's horizontal fractures, and in the old days, they drilled holes and would take slabs of stone out that way. Well, it's whole different than digging a pit and getting down below the groundwater table. And our water obviously runs between these rocks and these layers. And once the blasting, where's the sediment? Where's the silica dust all going to end up? It's going to be in our groundwater, and it won't just be on the Ridge Road, Bethel School area. It's going to be possibly, depending on which direction to go, it could be Bear Shiba and on out into the western part of the county. So, all about strengthening the restrictions for it. I think we need to look ahead as to, if the zoning board of appeals, if they can go with this special exception to the zoning board of appeals, we need to find out if it is a 500-foot buffer, and if it is a 50-foot mound of earth fencing, we need to make it to where there's no way they're going to be able to find a spot in York County to put that. So, that's, I'm all for strengthening, but we need to find out what we need to do with this exception side. And the meat part of this amendment, we need to have it strong enough to where they can't override you guys, which I feel like you do have our best interests in mind, and go directly to the zoning board of appeals, and we're, you know, and then money talks. So, that's all.
Thank you, sir. And I think that was the last hand I saw. So, do we have a motion to, up?
My name is David Adams. I live at 4106 Shasta Circle. To kind of expand on what these other gentlemen were talking about, I work, I'm an engineer, so I deal with codes every day. And as everybody knows, you know, codes are open to interpretation. People interpret them differently. So, I'm for, you know, providing more stringent, you know, requirements if you are going to allow this. But, again, please spend the time to research that. Understand, you know, what other mines, how they operate before you make that decision. And to expand on another gentleman, I'd like to see what those are. You know, if you can have another meeting to show those, so we understand that you've done your due diligence and work to ensure that, you know, those restrictions are in place. So, thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right. Do we have a motion to?
We got another lady back there.
They're sprouting like weeds.
My name is Ellen Goff. I live at 981 Bonham Road. And I am echoing what has been said here, in favor of these ordinance revisions, but with special exceptions, and giving council the strongest possible sway over whether or not a mine, or a concrete plant, or housing development with unacceptable density can be put in our county. Because you all are our last line of defense. You're the ones that are protecting us. I mean, and we depend on your vigilance and also your memory, like four years ago, when everyone came before you and said, no mining. I think we have rights that perhaps should come before a lot of other considerations. We're here first. We're landowners, we're homeowners, we're taxpayers, and we're voters. We depend on you to remember that people don't want agricultural zoning messed with. I think that's loud and clear. I think it's loud and clear that people don't want to live anywhere near where there's a blasting site. People want clean water, whether it's coming up out of their tap, or it's in the river, or on Lake Wiley. We depend on you to remember all those things. And even though these ordinance changes are abstract, they can be taken up by anyone who buys a piece of property, or owns a piece of property, or wants some kind of exception. And we need you to remember what you've heard tonight and what you've heard in the past, because we depend on you. And we appreciate the work you do. Thanks.
Thanks, ma'am. Anybody else for?
Move to approve.
Discussion. All those favor say aye. Those no, do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
That's with the stated revisions or whatever?
They're already in it.
Yeah, they're.
Move to approve.
And we got a second, I think I heard. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, this is for Audrey too. Is there something besides, I mean, we're using the term special exception, is there something besides special exception that can be used that would bring this back to council?
No. The only alternative you have is because it's already allowed in AGC with a special exception, so there was no change made to that. If it's really an issue of, you just don't want to give this all to ZBA, is you remove it completely from AGC and only allow it in ID, and then with a special exception, then the vast majority of properties would have to be rezoned to allow mining. That's the only thing I can offer.
So, it would require a rezoning rather than special exception?
No, it would be, require a special exception as well, but if you remove it from AGC, even with the special exception, there's very little ID-zoned property in the county. So, I can say with pretty reasonable certainty that anyone wanting to do mining would have to come in for rezoning, except for a few parcels.
Yeah, normally, it's, tends to be the most restrictive way when you only give them the option of the ZBA. So, I think this is a more restrictive, almost to the point where I wondered a little bit about it not being able to come to us, but I heard the people speak.
So, you don't want it to come to us? I mean, you don't want it to?
Well, I think staff came up with what they feel like is the best thing to do, and, you know, it just leaves the ZBA as the only option. So, I'm, you know, I was sitting here struggling a little bit about that, but I thought, you know, sooner or later, we have to leave well enough alone and move forward. So, I can accept it the way it is. I'm just one person, though.
Michael?
Tonight, I'm good with it as is.
Okay. Any further discussion, question on the motion? All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Next item. Counsel to hear, to hold a public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 155, zoning code. And if you could, please try to be a little bit quiet when you leave.
Yeah.
Zoning code so as to amend the York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 155, zoning code so as to amend Appendix D, Exhibit 1, Code of York County Performance Standards Agreement, to add a provision providing for notices of sound level violations to be issued to owner, contractor suspected of exceeding maximum permitted sound levels, to authorize a sound study for uncorrected violations, and to require owner, contractor to reimburse the county for the cost of the study if the violation is confirmed by the study, to add protections for residential properties, to correct the sound level chart, to delete the glare paragraph therein, and to provide for other matters related thereto. Anybody, and hopefully everybody heard it, anybody here want to, I'm confused now, against? Anybody here against? Anybody for?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those favor say aye. Pose no. Need a new motion?
Would like to make the motion to deny, as written, totally deny. Make it go away.
Interesting. Do we have a second? So, do we have a new motion then?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Johnson?
And, I can, I can have concerns and can see Allison's point as to, here we are creating a whole nother level of bureaucracy. But, of the three reasons that are said, hey, here are the complaints we get. One of them is ongoing construction noise at Lakemont. Can't tell you how many emails I get about that construction going on at Lakemont from the neighborhoods that sit on Pleasant Road, and how it bothers them. Discharge of firearms in rural residential areas. I get that phone call routinely, because there is a group of gentlemen off of Dam Road who have literally staked a box in a field. It's a 10 by 10 square, and they have measured it off the front doors of every of the houses around them. And that box allows them to sit there and shoot guns, and they will sit there and shoot guns for five to six hours if they feel like it. And the sheriff's deputies can't do anything, despite the fact that you can literally see them standing in the fields from most of these people's kitchens. That is a, you know, in a high-density areas like mine, that is an issue. I would love another mechanism, and I've talked with the sheriff several times about the discharge of firearms, especially in residential areas, how I have concerns about it. I'm willing to pass this. I like the idea that if you make it too much noise, and it's your fault, you got to pay for the study. And if we haphazardly bring this, then we'll have to pay for it. And hopefully, we will only use this when needed, but that when we do use it, it will be to stop heavy construction noise, companies that are doing the wrong thing. So, that's why I would support it at this point.
And for clarification that was made at the last reading of this, this is not really related to your next-door neighbor having a party outside. This is more related to commercial, industrial. I mean, you always have the potential to call the sheriff or the local town law enforcement, and they can use their fair judgment. I would guess that our sheriff's office wants something a little bit more definitive, that they can have a little bit of a grip to deal with this stuff. But anyway, clarification further to Mr. Williams?
I mean, that's my understanding. The tools that we have to address the complaints that Mr. Johnson and the rest of us get don't work. And this is an attempt to find something that can.
So, here's, since I've made the motion to deny, let me explain why. First of all, I don't think we need a study to tell us about the sound and the issue of sound and everything. And for my district, I would get more calls if we didn't allow the discharge of firearms in the rural and residential areas. And I think that, Robert, you might get more calls too than complaints about them existing. So, I just, I think this is, I don't think it's the right thing. I don't think we've got this right yet, and I don't know what to really change on it to make it right. I feel like, you know, ours, we've got construction noise also, but they're allowed to go till 10 o'clock at night. So, you know, that just makes no sense. It seems to me that if we shorten the hours, that we would allow noise. Noise is very subjective, and I think that's the problem with this whole, with this whole ordinance, is that we, we need to say that, you know, what noise is allowed, without a study and going out with a meter, I mean, I can just see somebody now showing up with a meter to measure the noise somewhere. I just, that would be, I would be embarrassed if that were the way we handle things. That's just, and I do think it does, if your neighbor's partying and making too much noise, I do think it covers that. And if somebody's got a live band or something, I think, I mean, this is noise. So, that's noise to some people. That's why I think this is subjective. I don't think it's, you know, we define the other things down to the nitty-gritty grinder, and on this one, I don't think, I don't think we have. I think we've just kind of said, hey, we're going to do a study, and if we show up and you're making too much noise, you're going to pay, you're going to be the one to pay if you don't agree. And we proved that you were making too much noise. And what is that going to be, six months later after this party, or whatever the noise was? It just, this to me is senseless. That's why I voted to deny. I just, or maybe I just don't understand it, so I can explain it better, but.
Ms. Cox?
Perhaps I should have seconded the denial, but I was interested in hearing from staff if there was any additional feedback about what this is going to cost. And I had been getting, I got some rumors. I mean, I guess, here's my question. Most of the things that happen that require you to come out are probably after hours. We don't have anybody that works eight to five to do that. Are we saying that this is going to result in having to hire someone to do this? I understand the study part and how that's going to be dealt with, but.
To clarify, this isn't for residential. This isn't for battling neighbors. This performance agreement is for industrial uses and some of the commercials. So, it came about because y'all were upset about all the noise from mining, and they have to sign this too. And what this is, is if we get complaints, and we take a noise meter out there, that's a little handheld thing, and the owner challenges us and says, no, my noise meter says I'm fine, we have a mechanism at the staff level, yes, to hire a consultant who's an expert and can say empirically, no, you're in violation of these noise ordinances, and you need to change. And that's really what the intent was when we added this.
I guess the question that I'm having, though, is that it's not restricted to a performance standard agreement and enforcement of that. I mean, it's, in the, well, why do we have the notes here of discharge of firearms in rural and residential areas?
Because someone asked me what type of noise complaints do we get, and I just gave you the types we get, and it doesn't.
But you're saying this ordinance doesn't even address that. This is purely to enforce whatever performance standards agreement we have in the previous mining operation?
Yes. It applies across the board to all industrial. And I didn't mean to confuse anybody, but the question was, what type of noise complaints do we get? And I gave you that answer.
So, what is the study, the cost of, what is the study for?
The study is, when you do an actual noise study, someone will go out, and they take into account of things like the topography, the attenuation, the wind direction, all of those things. So, instead of someone just standing with a noise meter on a property line, they do an actual more empirical study, like a traffic study. And so, those are usually done by experts. And then, what they will also look at is other industries that are similar to this. Like, if you ask, is blasting violating this noise standard? And if we can prove it with the noise meter, and the property owner was in a disagreement, then at least we have a tool to come back and say, okay, fine, we're going to hire a consultant. And if it shows that you are in violation of it, then we have a way to write the ticket, or we can write the ticket, but when we go in front of the magistrate, we can say, we did all our due diligence. They're really in violation of this.
And again, this is, this is restricted only to an agreement that is entered between the property owner?
Yes. When we have an industrial use and some commercial uses, there's, I think, a couple in there, they have to sign this. What is Appendix D? They have to sign the performance standard agreement, whether they're getting site plan approval. It would be, well, it could be an industrial plat, if it was an industrial plat. But basically, through the site plan and permit process, they have to sign this.
So, let me, you can tell me if I'm thinking correctly, Audrey, because I was asked, you're so anti-government. Why would you be for this? And a parallel I would use that would follow in with other industries is like, if you lived in a nice subdivision, and an airport gets built beside you, and then you have the agreement about the noise and all that, and they say, hey, it's going to be a certain level. And then, if you don't have something like this, you have no enforcement arm.
It does make the enforcement very challenging, because as everyone has pointed out, one, code enforcement doesn't work after hours. Also, usually by the time we get the noise complaint, it's over. So, we can go, then, these part of these noise studies are, they could look at similar existing uses in other places and say, okay, well, we can kind of figure out what's going on or what you're doing. So.
Any, Mr. Winkler?
And I'll just say that, you know, the reason I support this is, one, it is through the agreements and stuff, and it does not hamper the firearms in my area, because you're right. There's a lot of deer hunting, squirrel hunting, and occasionally, I've got a few friends that own quite a bit of acreage, and we go out there and just shoot things, just, you know, for target practice and stuff. So, I would, I would probably get shot while I was out there if I did something to restrict some of that. But that's not what this is. This is for that ordinance, that agreement. And it does not, you know, and I understand if you're talking, like Councilmember Johnson talking about where it's in a neighborhood, and you're all right there, you know, staked out just enough to shoot in the neighborhood, I probably would have an issue with that as well. But since that's not what we're talking about, you know, I support this.
Any other comments? Ms. Cox?
If, if this is restricted only to enforcing those agreements, and it's UDA or commercial, then I would think that it should be funded by them too. I mean, it should be part of the application process. It should be front-end, frontline. I guess I want to avoid a situation where we have an open-ended, I can't imagine that we would have 40 million of them, but I think, how do we protect ourselves from having this requirement to go out and do every complaint that you get, and to do a study for those which we may or may not be able to recoup the cost? Is this factored into that cost on the front end so that we're not, we're not putting general fund money at risk?
No, because the way it is drafted is, if we thought, and you do have to rely somewhat on staff for us to say, I think there's a legitimate basis, the noise, we would go out with the hand noise meters first, and say, first, can we prove it that way? If we can't, and we really think it's legitimate, then we would go forward. And if we, the way it's written, if there is a way it's written, if there is a violation, they have to reimburse us. If there's not, then the county pays for it. And part of the benefit or trade off on that is if we get a neighbor continually complaining and we've done it once or we don't believe it's a violation, we're not continually making a property owner pay for something. I mean, that was kinda the balance the consultant was trying to reach.
Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Oppose no?
No.
Yeah, I heard one.
You only got one that time. I'm not sure about third.
Okay. Counsel to all to public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 155 Zoning Code, so as to add a new supplemental regulation section designated as Section 155.502 specifying requirements for liability agreements related to certain industrial uses, landfills, mining and non-metallic mineral product manufacturing, to specify the purpose for the agreement, its applicability and its contents, required road construction standards to be included, the provision of a financial guarantee by the applicant and the requirement that the agreement must be reached and executed prior to final site plan approval, to amend the individual district regulations pertaining to special exceptions in A G C, A G C one, R U D, I D and L I by adding a reference to the supplemental regulations and providing for other matters related there too. Anybody here wanna speak against? Anybody wanna speak in favor?
Move to close.
Okay.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Do we have a new motion?
Who to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir. Mr. Winkler?
Just a clarifying question in all of this. When you read through it, and I'm sorry, I'm tired and probably read more into it than I should, but it talks about requirements for liability agreements related to certain industrial uses, landfills and mining. And then it says, non-metallic mineral product manufacturing, which is our code word for cement factories. And then it says, special exceptions in A G C, A G C one. I know the mining and stuff is a special exception in that, but this wording has cement plants in this, the way it's worded. I just wanna make sure that that's clear, that, you know, it could be a little confusing that that says includes the cement plant in that list and then directly below that talks about special exceptions.
I think the issue is that these sections are so far apart, but you're seeing them in, like, in succession. So, I understand the concern, but I'll double check, but I don't think we're opening the door to have the cement plants in A G C. I think it's just when they're actually codified, it'll make more sense and be clearer on that issue.
But you can clarify that before a third reading.
Yeah, it's a special exception under I D too. So, if it's not allowed by special exception, it shouldn't be included.
Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, counsel to all to public hearing, consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 155 Zoning Code, so as to provide for and establish a new outdoor lighting requirement section, to amend the definition section to include fixture, foot candle, fully shielded glare, Kelvin lamp, light trespass, lumen, luminaire, outdoor lighting, seasonal lighting, security lighting and sky glow, to establish and add the outdoor lighting standards for the county and designate the purpose of the standards, their applicability to new construction, to provide for exceptions, to require an outdoor lighting plan, to establish a five-foot setback, shielding requirements, appropriate lighting levels, maximum light levels at property line, to establish correlated color temperatures of installed luminaries, to designate special use requirements associated with outdoor recreation canopies and parking structures and outdoor sales lots, to recommend dark sky approved fixtures and to establish non-conformity subjects, subject to declaration as public nuisances requiring correction, to amend Section 155.594, application for zoning compliance, to add requirements for outdoor lighting plan and to provide for other matters related there too. Anybody here wanna speak against? Anybody wanna speak in favor?
I don't wanna speak, but I'm in favor.
Do we have a motion to?
Motion to approve.
Well, we gotta close public hearing first.
Oh, motion to close.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, before the second, this one had the addition to not take effect for 60 days, which wasn't anything in the ordinance I could change, but if you would include that in your...
In the motion?
It is in the ordinance. Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yes, it is.
Okay. So, we had a, did I hear a second?
Do I?
Second.
Okay.
Discussion. We're good.
Yeah.
Ms. Love?
So, one thing that I wanted to be sure that's covered is, I know Asheville, North Carolina adopted something very similar to this and they had a little tiny issue. And that was that string lights needed to still be, they're not considered dark sky, obviously, but a lot of people have them on their patios and restaurants have them out. So, I just wanted to be sure that the string lights would still be allowed for wineries and such. Just string lights in general would still be allowed.
I think they need to meet the ordinance. If we're going for dark sky, we're going for dark sky, but I don't know that, I don't know how that was written.
If I'm happy with it, trust.
No, no, you either do it or you don't. I mean, it's not just your ordinance, but I mean, there's probably a way that it could be written to make sure that, if we just say any string lights, they might can get around the ordinance, but they're, I mean, I see what you're trying to say. There ought to be a way to do it on a patio because it's not getting to the sky.
Right.
But there's, if you take them out all day, if there's a way to do it, there's a way to get around it. So...
I'm just saying, I don't know specifically what the wording is, but I know that Asheville had a real problem with their restaurants because a lot of them had outdoor patios and those lights are, I mean, they're not real bright and they're not casting upward, really, it's not a bad thing, but they had eliminated them in their wording. So, we don't wanna do that. I don't think, I don't wanna do that. I don't know what...
Say that again. Now, they...
So, they had, in their dark sky ordinance, they had eliminated the string lights.
Oh, they put in there with the exception of string lights.
I don't mind asking staff to look at that between now and third reading, but I, I mean, it's worth looking at before we pass it, but I wanna make sure we don't open any doors we don't intend to open.
Yeah. But I mean, Allison makes a good point too. We don't wanna handcuff up a restaurant.
Right. I would, I would hope it's not so strong that that couldn't happen. If it is, there's probably something wrong with ordinance.
Ms. Cox?
Just so that I'm clear, I'm actually very surprised that we don't have anybody here speaking for or against. I mean, I just was hoping that we would at least have some input from the stakeholders.
Would you like for me to gather them for the...
I would, I mean, I just wanna make sure that we're, I mean, basically this mandates this particular kind of lighting scheme, doesn't it, in everything? I mean, even in A G C outdoor event. I mean, it may be good. I just don't know. I don't know how much it costs. I don't know what the true impact is. I know that it makes sense in the highly populated areas. I just, I just wanna make sure I understand. This is a mandated lighting scheme change for everywhere. Is that right?
You're actually very fortunate because your whole district will be basically dark sky lit rather than like the rest of us who have to deal with lighting that's already not, not good.
I would say, I have not heard a whole lot about this, not like I did about cement plants and other things, but all the feedback I have gotten on this particular one has been supportive because most people have told me they moved out to the western side of the county to get away from all the light pollution, to be able to see the stars and stuff. And so, they're okay with whatever we do to make it so they can continue to see the stars out there and not have the lights blind them being able to look up and see what God created.
Yeah. The biggest problem with light ordinance like these is people don't need them until it's too late and then that's when it's too late, you can't, you can't do it. And we can always, if we just, if we figure out it doesn't work, we can fix it. Like Mr. Johnson says, any bad ordinance is one you can't fix. But, once it's gone, it's gone. So, I don't have...
I'm certainly good with it. There's nobody that showed up. It just concerns me that we've had a lot of folks who said they didn't know about any of this stuff and at any rate, I mean, I haven't heard anything against it. It's just shocking.
And I think the goal of this is just for the businesses and residential to live in harmony because we certainly want the businesses. You can't have residential without the businesses. But at the same time, you don't wanna Walmart, sorry Walmart, but a Walmart parking floodlights splashing in five homes near it or whatever. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, consider third reading, 1732, case number 1732, to resolve from A G C to R C two at 2275 New Gray Rock Road in the Fort Mill community.
Motion to defer until the applicant requests it to be brought back for third reading.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Was that the only one? I thought I saw more than that earlier.
Well, it's third.
Okay. So, now we're new business. First thing, Bill, do you have it to play? Karen? So, this is the York County video discussion that when I saw the I-77 video, I thought it was fantastic and for us to put that on our website, I think it in a quick two-minute little clip, said all we would want is the council members to say about York County taking off the I-77 part. So, I wanted it to be shown for the council to decide one way or the other if they agree or not. So, it could be part of our website.
The South Carolina I-77 Alliance Region is ripe with vast business and manufacturing opportunities spanning the I-77 corridor, stretching over 90 miles. The area covers four counties in South Carolina, including York County, just south of Charlotte, where urban vitality seamlessly connects to recreation and nature.
Ashbrook's been in the Charlotte region for over 20 years. We have recently moved into Fort Mill in the Kingsley location within York County in March of 2016. With the phenomenal growth happening in York County and in Fort Mill, that was really a great marriage for us to move into the Kingsley Park and understand the growth that is continuing to happen here, which we continue to grow with our second building that'll be opening in May of 2018.
So, LPL has been here for approximately six months. One of the things we were striving to do was to create an environment where our employees could do their best work. And what we believe is an important piece of that is health and wellbeing, meaning we want to provide different environments so that people can get up and move during the day and also provide different locations for people to work.
Composite Resources moved to Rock Hill in 2001. What a lot of people don't realize is South Carolina has become a huge hub for the aerospace industry. Being within South Carolina is good for us to be close to our clients and also our suppliers.
Bringing our associates here to the Fort Mill area has been really positive. We've been able to offer them a great location that has great schools, great housing. Our associates are really getting to experience the local community.
We have an urban environment that provides them with activities after hours and on the other side, we have this incredible resource in the Greenway, which allows them to do family events, allows the company to do events. What we love about York County is it gives us the perfect blend of urban and rural.
So, we have been working with a number of local universities and colleges. We're always looking to bring in new talent as we continue to grow in this area. So, having those partnerships and working with the local colleges has been great for our organization in an area that we can attract that talent.
In the manufacturing environment, we need a mix of hands-on labor, but then also very technical, either office staff or engineering staff. So, being in a metropolitan area like Charlotte gives us access to a wide variety of personnel.
This is it. This is the perfect solution. It gives us the suburban flexibility. It gives us that urban vitality and then there's this connection to nature and to recreation that's really important.
You have low land costs, a business-friendly government, but on top of that, when it comes to lifestyle, you have access to the beach a couple hours away, mountains less than an hour away and everything that comes along with living in a big city.
The I-77 Alliance Region, four counties, one ideal opportunity.
And for clarification, the I-77 front end would be chopped off and it'd just be the York County thing. And to, and the I-77 Alliance has agreed to their good nature to allow us to do that. With Bill, you can, you wanna?
It would cost us $750 to build a channel that...
To fine tune it for York County. So, it's the will of the council, but I think that would...
Yeah. I mean, I don't, the $750, I don't know why we'd spend it. That's more taxes that I have on mine. I mean, not to just let it, I think it could go there on its, on without chopping that off. But if we were gonna do it, we probably need to look at the, if we're gonna do it, I'd also recommend, I mean, if we're gonna start editing, I would look at that one about Winthrop. Winthrop there, so Winthrop's one of a lot of accolades. I believe it said, the one that they chose to put up there was the eighth best university in the state. I think Winthrop has a whole lot more accolades.
In the south.
In the south. Okay. Well, so quickly it looked like it was in the state. Okay. Well, that's better than I thought it was.
So, I don't think we need to have an official vote if everybody's good with it or whatever. I mean, we don't need a vote, do we?
I have no issue. Sir?
Oh, okay. Everybody okay with it? Okay. Next item, council to consider first reading of an ordinance to establish operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2018, to provide for the levy of taxes for York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2018, to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds, to maintain its reserve account, to establish and fund a supplemental debt service fund, to establish and fund the account for York County economic development, and to rescind the technology replacement ordinances, number 613 and 912, and provide for other fiscal matters related to county government.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I would point out...
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
For those who want notice, this council will meet Wednesday night, 6:00 at, in Rock Hill, at the Government Center on Heckle, and we will discuss this budget in detail. We encourage you all to attend.
Everybody, yes, sir. Mr. Williams?
I read this and like I usually do, and I did, but this is the first time I've heard rescinding the technology replacement ordinances. I knew we were talking about them. I have concerns about rescinding them completely, but we do have three readings and I guess we can talk about those as we go, but that's the first. I didn't realize that was part of the budget discussion, but I don't have any problem doing it by title only, but that's...
Yeah. And I guess for everybody here, this is more procedural to get the ball rolling. I do have some issues that, I mean, the presentation was showing zero mil increase, but at the same time, it was showing what we have to do for the retirement, what was that one again? State?
The mandatory employer contribution.
Yeah, the .4 mil increase that was suggested to keep us ahead of the curve on that. The option of like capital project finishing that sooner so that save the taxpayers in the long run. Those are items that may change that proposal, so we all gotta be alert to that. But question on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item's committee reports. The honorable, I think, Mr. Chairman? Yes.
You have the two items from, or the one item at least, from the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. Such a short meeting too. How could I ever forget? So, we did have item number six on there that is council to refer to the Justice and Public Safety Committee, the ordinance to amend the Code of the County of York, South Carolina, Chapter 30, Sections 30.07 and 30.11, in order to clarify the roles of council committees, enumeration, appointment thereto, to rename two standing committees, to clarify the process by which standing committees receive and promulgate ordinances, to clarify and conform the code and rules of council to the council's custom and practice regarding ordinances, resolutions and its legislative process, and further clarify the council requirements as to ordinance and resolution form, approval, writing, referral, readings and adoption, to distinguish emergency ordinances and to provide for other matters related thereto. So, for discussion, do we have a motion to get it?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Cox?
Well, I asked that we pull this for a number of reasons. One, I wasn't sure why we were referring this to the Justice and Public Safety Committee. This is an ordinance that was discussed in email by council about what we want council to do and I think that anytime we refer something to a committee, that it ought not be in consent agenda. I think that's something that we need to just do as a matter of rule, that it not be in consent. We all need to know about it and then all need to talk about it and make an intentional decision about what we're gonna do with it.
Well, that's a, that's a good point. I'll try to remember that. And Bill, two of us together can remember that. Okay.
I know that I checked with, as I understand it, at the agenda meeting, it was, our county attorney said that it needed to come to the Justice and Public Safety Committee and I just wanted to have some, I want us to be aware of why that is.
Sure. The tucked away at the back of that ordinance section is a three-line statement saying that the modifications to that rules needs to go to that particular committee. I mean, that could certainly be changed in the ordinance. That could be something else that could be debated, but it is tucked away in there and you can dispense with that requirement by two-thirds vote of... And you can dispense with that requirement by a two-thirds vote of council and arguably refer to another committee, or just receive an amended ordinance. This ordinance has a number of things presented. The impetus for it was the process by which committees were receiving items and generating ordinances and discussing items in committee that were not being referred by council, or at least council was not aware of. You may recall, we had a discussion about procedure that has kind of been adopted informally by council in articulating by the chairman or other members of the committees how, what items were being discussed, what ordinance were being considered. So this ordinance addresses that aspect of change. Additionally, there was some, and so what is the process to get an item into the committee? So that's the main part of addressing this, these changes. There was also some discussion by a council member about changing the title of two committees. The Economic Development Committee had a, I believe, a planning and zoning, a planning component to it. So that will be transferred out to the zoning committees. So that'll be a planning and zoning committee, and economic development would be structured solely for economic development purposes. And there seemed to be some, you know, broader expanse of responsibilities of that committee. So I thought that made sense upon the suggestion. Then there's some other cleanup provisions in the process of developing the ordinances, cleaning up some of the language that is outdated technologically-wise, the use of the minute-track system of noticing council members of proposed changes, requirements of referral or not referral, and it just needs to be cleaned up. We addressed, have historically addressed some of these concerns, but have not fully been codified. But use of the consent agenda is being proliferated more. That should be addressed on what constitutes a reading and use of the consent agenda. So there are a number, there are a host of rules that probably just need to be updated through council. So that whole process is hopefully addressed in this amendment.
And all of those things that you mentioned are things that are currently delegated to the Justice and Public Safety Committee?
Well, under the wording of that section of the code, of Section 30, there is a small provision that says that puts it in the area of that particular committee. And that is unique to that code section. Other referrals are typically generated by the council chairman at a meeting, if necessary. And so perhaps consideration of whether that committee is appropriate can be addressed by that committee during this process, if you choose to refer this item to the committee tonight.
I don't have a problem at all with the Justice and Public Safety Committee taking this up. I just want, it seems like we've done a lot of other things that would have fallen in the category of this type of review. And we think that it's not been done through this committee. And I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware that that was at least our county attorney's interpretation, that it needs to be going through that committee.
And I think you made a good point, too. It's better to have it on the non-consent agenda, too, so their clarifications for council and citizens can be clearly made. I think that was a good suggestion. You good?
I'm voting.
You, any other comments?
Nope.
Okay, anybody else? Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item is committee reports. The Honorable Chairman Winkler is going to defer to one of his members, Mr. Johnson, I think, to give the report for planning economic development.
Mr. Williams and I attended a committee meeting on April 24. Mr. Winkler had a family conflict that day and was unable to attend. We somehow, we soldiered on without you, Robert. And Chad, feel free to give me the-
So far, you're doing fine.
Yeah. We discussed the placement of distribution centers and the incentives based that we give distribution centers and where they should be in the county in order to get full incentives or not get any incentives if they're located in certain areas of the county, where we are talking about that. We also talked about fee and lieu agreements that going forward, we would like the Economic Development Committee to vote on all fee and looms before they go to council, specifically that we be given information. I am requesting, and this is, this was discussed at that meeting, and I'm asking that it be, that it be something that we get from this point forward, that the head of economic development, the county manager, and the finance director review each fee and lieu proposal and present it to the committee and give us feedback and allow our committee to make decisions based on that knowledge and then send it out to full council. That does not mean that we are involved in the negotiation. I want to make this very clear. Our committee is not involved in the negotiation, but it is our job to make sure that the fee and lieu makes sense. And I just want them to be able to explain the rationale for or against the fee and lieu. But our committee, and hopefully our committee, Robert's committee is not going to get involved in the negotiation of fee and looms. That is not our job, and that is not something I want to get involved in. That is David Swinson's job. But certainly, hearing from those three people will give us a better understanding of how it got to where it is. And lastly, we discussed the potential of needing legal counsel from time to time on Economic Development Committee. And I am asking, and we in the committee voted to have that addressed in executive session tonight, and I would ask that any motion for executive session include that.
Thank you, sir. Next item is council member new non-agenda comments. Any council member have anything to add to the meeting tonight that's not been on the agenda?
I'll just thank Councilmember Johnson for taking care of that for me, because I did have an issue with my father and couldn't make it to the meeting after I called him, so.
Oh, I don't see any.
I got one.
Of course. Ms. Cox.
I asked today, and I appreciate the quick response from staff on this, what the status of the county-wide impact fee study was, simply because we have pushed forward, and it's the same consultant that's looking at this issue that's looking at the Fort Mill one. And from what I gathered from that information, it is, if the council wants to move forward with this, we won't be getting information for some time now. And there is a potential that if, whatever is going to be before council, if it gets to an ordinance, it's something that would likely not happen until maybe the late, first reading, late December 1st, January. That's going to pose problems, especially since we have one of our council members who's leaving. I think we need to, if we're going to look at this, we need to plan to make sure that whatever decision's going to be made on it, that we not have to straddle, that we make the decision contemporaneous with what we're doing here and that we at least ensure enough time that would allow for us to decide it through third reading this year. I've been through, as a constituent out here, I've been through a situation where there were some contentious issues coming up or, you know, that required a lot of input and study and discussion from council, which that's going to take. And then boom, you've got new people serving on there that makes it difficult to at least finish the, what we told people we were going to do and what we spent the money on. So I would ask council to look at that and support our efforts to at least make sure that we have the time to do it, if there is the will to consider something like that.
And Audra, if I can, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think your timetable right now would be September to have the consultant report on the general York County?
Yes, the report would go to Planning Commission in September for recommendation to council. And the, based on that, the soonest I could get it to council is like September 17th.
Oh, it would make the year, then.
The question is, and I appreciate Councilwoman Cox bringing this up, the report would, and the go/no-go, as I call it, would definitely be before the year end. The question then is if it's a go decision, the ordinances, that's going to be a pretty aggressive timeframe to draft ordinances and have three readings by the end of the year. That would be challenging, in my view.
Okay, anybody else? They're being, oh, Mr. Williams.
Bump told me this.
Oh, okay.
He has something to say, but.
Citizen concerns. Ms. McNeil went ahead and decided to use the public forum. So do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, sir. I may we go into executive session to discuss a proposal, contract for relationship involving the retention of associated council for economic development purposes. Also to discuss the personnel matter relating to animal control and discuss a potential contractual matter regarding an emergency dwelling permit.
We have a second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Fifteen till. Council has no action out of executive session. If there's no further council discussion, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.